There are rooms, one at all.
Are we live? Okay, welcome to our work meeting this afternoon. We're back again. It's been past, it didn't seem like two weeks. We'd like to welcome everyone here, all the council. Tom McDonald's not able to make it today. And we'll start out with, we've got a presentation from our MGT group. And we've been working for that, put down for several months now. And if they can explain, this is the management consulting group that we hired several months ago to go through all the different areas of the city and help us make sure we're doing everything the optimal way, based on best practice. So we'll turn the time over. Are you gonna take it, Kerry, or do you just take the screen?
You did a great job introducing, so I think I'm going to shoot it over to Carson and Bruce to give you all.
All right, sounds good.
So we have Bruce up here on the screen, you can see from MGT Consulting. He's been the project manager lead from MGT's firm for the city and coordinating the team that's been studying our local government efficiency study across the city. Today, we're going to be covering two of those reports because they're so broad. We only have time for that many, and so today would be police and finance. So Bruce, if you want to introduce yourself a little earlier.
But Carson, if you don't mind, when we're talking about finance, we'll be talking about the purchasing aspect of it. We're not talking about personnel or the entire finance department. We're just talking about the business.
Yeah, and in the introduction, you'll see that each department had its own. Not every report is going to be identical and looking at the same things. Because we're looking at different efficiencies in the different departments, and they're also very different. So Kerry said, this one's not staffing, yes.
As far as, so this will be going over two of the departments, right? How many in total unique reports do you guys know?
Yes, there are about, Bruce, is it 17?
There are divisions of departments, there's, I think, about 12 unique departments.
Yeah, then there were some division-specific ones as well, in addition to the departments.
Okay, so this is just a small bite of the apple, so let's see what's going on with the study and where they're going to use it for particular departments.
Yeah.
Yes, and just to be clear, we will have the entire report published to the public once we're finished. So this is just a little piece of that.
The goal is to, each council study session is to work little by little and chip through, answer all of your guys' questions, get you the information in small chunks. And then, yes, there will be a complete report, and each department and division will be a chapter of that final report.
And this, this is essentially part of our quest to make Orem the best city in the state, break down each department in this area, and focus on to see how we're doing things and optimize where possible.
Absolutely, yeah. The goal of the study is to validate current practices that are efficient and come up with new strategies and ideas of how to enhance efficiencies in the city. So, yes, Pete, you want to share this? HDMI from here? Bruce, while we're, what? Yes. Bruce, while we're pulling this up, you want to introduce yourself in MGT, give a little background?
Sure, my name is Bruce Cowans, and I am with MGT Consulting. Thank you for having me. I am here today with Jerry Wolf, also of MGT. Jerry was the principal author of the finance chapter. I was the principal author of the police chapter. This project arises, as we understand it, from the city's earnest interest in running a tight ship. And I think we can conclude that you run a tight ship. We largely validated your practices. We have some changes to recommend. We think in the world of continuous improvement, no matter how good an organization it is, from time to time, you'll find things that you could tighten up. But there's, there's no serious problems in this. There are some opportunities for you to address the level of services you provide and their cost. So, okay, so you have a slide deck, and let's go to the next slide, please. We will begin today by discussing what do we mean by efficiency. The city has titled this project "An Efficiency Study", and so that we're not talking past each other, we will spend a couple of minutes soon talking about, what does that mean, and how did that affect how we did this study? And then for each department, for police and for finance, we will review, what did you ask? What did we find? And what do you do next? So, next slide, please, okay? Dictionaries provide multiple definitions. In this case, we have put in front of you here a list of potential definitions of efficiency. The first one, I think, who's come to everybody's mind, to do the same thing at lower cost. Is there a way to get more bang for the buck? Or alternatively, if you can do the same thing, same cost, but do it faster, that would be efficient. Or, and we're not doing this heavily, but if you spend a little more, could you get a lot more? That would be efficient. Or, could you spend much less, but have only a minimal impact on service levels? That might be efficient as well. You will see flavors of these in each of the departmental reports. And today, we're here only with police and finance, but we will be back in future workshop sessions to review our findings of the other departments and divisions. Next slide, please, okay? Our understanding is that you have a culture of good government, and you commissioned this study as an attempt to get some third-party insight from a firm that does a lot of management consulting to the public sector, and see what we think. That does not guarantee you will agree with us in all cases, and you won't hurt our feelings if you don't. But we have tried, based on our experience, in comparison to peers, a selection of cities in your area, plus our experience nationally, to give you some findings of what we think are judgments on how you are providing services. The review is not a complete review of all city government. That would be a massive scope, and that was never intended. The city provided us with a charter for each division or department that we reviewed, usually two or three specific topics that it wanted us to address. And we did this with input from both the city management and the departments. The report is MGT's report, but I will say that we've had a very active involvement from city staff in questioning our drafts, asking us to clarify, and asking us to improve not only the subject matter, but also to make it more visually accessible. We understand that at the end of this, you are going to put the document in front of the public, and that you know more about what the city does than the public does. So some of what's in the report will be addressed to an audience of the public. So let us go to the next slide, please, okay? This is the list of who was in the study. I'll pause for a minute and let you review it.
So to answer your question, Mayor, these are the departments and specific divisions that were analyzed throughout this entire efficiency study process. And as Bruce said, MGT was able to meet with every single department head and division leader throughout the study to gain more insight into the context of Orem City and how we operate, learn more about council priorities and objectives in those departments and divisions, policy-wise, and also to gain access to various data points, open-form recommendations.
Okay, all right, onward to police. And there were two questions here, is should the department offer 24/7 lobby service? And is the supervisory structure appropriate? As to the lobby service issue, there is currently an emergency assistance button outside of the police headquarters building, but you can only get lobby service for non-emergency matters during day shift. The question here was, would it be worth establishing a 24/7 resident access to those services? There are people that work different shifts. What if you need a copy of an accident report, and you get off work in the middle of the night? How do you do that? With regard to that, we looked at a couple of questions. One was whether there would be an incremental cost. We think not materially so. What the plan would be, if you do this, would be that day shift staff would be assigned to work night shift. So it doesn't require you to add staff, it just changes when those shifts happen. It might have a very minor amount of cost to build the lobby and the button inside, but we did not consider that a material expense. We addressed the issue of whether there would be demand for these services. What we found locally was that West Jordan has a 24/7 lobby with a button that you could press. Really, the only difference between what West Jordan does and what Orem does is your button is outside and theirs is inside. But other than that, it rings to dispatch, and they will send somebody if you need them. So we concluded from that that there is not a precedent of 24/7 lobby service in this area. And we called West Jordan to ask, how much use does your button get? And they said hardly any. So part of our thinking is influenced by just something that people want. And of course, you know, when you want it, you want it. But we think for the most part, it would not be receiving much use. We are also, we considered the appeal of night shift work. Our bias was, most people who have adjusted to working day shifts and have their family and personal lives organized that way probably don't want to be working at nights. We spoke with record clerks, and they did, I don't want to, I don't want to phrase this too strongly, but let's say they were not enthusiastic about it. They will do it if you ask. So we are not recommending that you have a 24/7 lobby if you want to. You know, feel free, go ahead. We don't think there would be a great deal of demand for it. We don't think it's expensive, but it's not worth spending much money on if people aren't going to use it much. Okay, on to the issue of supervisory structure. Supervisory structure is actually, in our view, several questions in one. One is, you have just filled a position of deputy chief, and while it was already done, staff asked us, what do we think of that? Another definition of supervisory structure is, are the supervisory titles that you have industry standard? And are they common in this area? What do we think of those? And then finally, spans of control. Supervisory structure involves, for each supervisor, overseeing a certain number of people. So as to that, we find that the deputy chief position, we really like this. I know you've already done it, so if you were nervous, you can breathe a sigh of relief. But we think that having a clearly designated second-in-command is a good idea, and we applaud your decision to have done that. As to the use of supervisory titles, we think that the titles that you're using are common in the area and common nationally, that your structure of the divisions of the department matches your peers, and there is essentially a validation of the structure that you have. One area where we raised some questions was on the span of control, the staff-to-supervisor ratios. And the chief may disagree with us, and if so, frankly, we're going to defer to the chief. Can we have the next slide, please? We looked at staff-to-supervisor ratios across the divisions of the department, and we looked at the department versus other local peers. And we found that in general, the department has a staff-to-supervisor ratio consistent with peer cities and consistent with our experience nationally. There is a difference at the division level within the department. Patrol and support services are operating essentially at the level that the peers do. In investigations, we found that supervisors have fewer people reporting to them than in the rest of the department. We don't know that that's wrong. We think that it calls for writing a policy. If the chief were to say, but I really need this to be this way, I don't think we would have a strong objection. But we note that if someone is promoted to sergeant and has supervisory duties, how much supervision they do depends which division they're in. It's pretty consistent between patrol and support services. If you are a sergeant in investigations, you have fewer people reporting to you. Now, perhaps, the nature of the work done makes that appropriate. But we are calling that to your attention and would defer to the chief on his opinion of that. Next slide, please. So, what do you need to do next? On the lobby service, you know, we're not fans, but if you are, go ahead, you need to decide what to do about that. On the span of control issue, as I mentioned earlier, if this is your intent, that to be a sergeant or a supervisor in investigations means that the nature of your work calls for you to supervise fewer people, I think for the sake of equity for the other sergeants in the department, it would help to write that into a policy document. And if you feel that that's appropriate, again, we don't argue, but if it's just something that evolved over time, our finding is that if that's your intent, then that's okay, but please say so. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn this over to Jerry Wolf now to present. In finance, we addressed only.
Bruce, one second.
Yes.
Bruce, this is Bryn Bynie. Just a couple of comments, if you don't mind, and maybe a question. So what I, first of all, I love what you said in terms of prefacing all this with our why, that we have kind of a culture of continuous improvement. And one of the first things that you did specifically in looking at our public safety was review the Citygate master plan study.
Oh, yes.
And if you don't mind, might put me on the spot, could you please kind of share your assessment of that?
I thought it was an outstanding report. I don't know what you paid for it, but my sense is that the people that did that were very strong and with particular expertise that is not universal in all firms, and their understanding of the communications and technology that runs the department. I was very pleased to see that you had undertaken that. And frankly, when this study started, that. And frankly, when this study started, I thought we were going to have to dive into some of that. And my question was, won't that be very time consuming and expensive? Having already headed that one off at the pass, that was not in our scope, but I will, I want to aim some praise at the authors of that report and to your internal sponsorship of that investigation. I thought it was terrific.
Thank you. So although I agree, we didn't put you up to that assessment of that study, right? So but that kind of leads into how do we get to what questions or what areas of work or what specific services, how do we get to the point where we are deciding what those assessments are going to be? And so in part, it's what have we looked at recently? What have we seen other cities do? How did the interviews go with department heads and division managers? Or what have we heard from the public? So I just wanted to make sure that our meeting in council know what's kind of gone into even coming up with these questions that we're then having you do all of this analysis for us.
That's helpful, and thank you, Brent, for that. And what I would say here is that when we look at the efficiency of different types of municipal departments, some of them have workload that is directly proportional to population served or some kind of transactional count. Police is not really that kind of organization, particularly for patrol. You need to be able to have prompt response to emergency requests for help. And so, police is about a coverage strategy that you deploy your team so that wherever help is needed, you can get somebody on the scene quickly and send backup to them in a timely manner. But we don't, we don't measure police by how many tickets written or crimes prevented. It's a question of can we provide speedy response when somebody is in crisis?
And then to Brent's point, so for finance, you know, the context behind this one, finance is a pretty internal function. So the questions of the study for the finance department were informed by feedback from, like Brent said, other departments that interact with finance, finance themselves who know, they feel the strain, the bottlenecks, and of course, from elected officials as well. So all these different perspectives, as Brent mentioned, feed into, here's where MGT is focusing, because they only have so many hours and there are a lot of things they can analyze citywide, but we had to define a scope for them to hone in those hours and use them wisely for those more important purposes that departments or city staff felt were were needed, where we needed to look at. So with that, Bruce, do you want to continue with the finance?
Thank you. Well, I'm going to turn this over to Jerry Wolf at this point, who was the principal author of this chapter. I may chime in, but this is for Jerry to present.
Good afternoon, everybody. As Bruce said, I was the principal author on the finance department. What you see on the screen here, there were two primary questions for finance. One, investigating the purchasing threshold, press threshold, sorry, and approval process. And the second was looking at software, procurement software, and whether it could streamline the procurement process. We go to the next slide, please. Our, thank you. So looking at the purchasing thresholds, okay, we're recommending that the city increase its current threshold for our use of RFPs. Right now, the city requires an RFP, a request for proposal, for any procurement over $25,000. Now, the city manager has some discretion over that. So the, you know, for really large purchases, the city manager can, you know, you know, does not necessarily need to have execute an RFP. But by and large, there is an RFP process for anything that's above $25,000. We're recommending that the city raise that cutoff from 25 to $50,000. And there are several reasons for that. Sandy, right now, they have a cutoff of $40,000. And I'll come back to the 40,000 in a few minutes. But Sandy's cutoff is $40,000. West Valley has a cutoff of $30,000. Now, we think over, we see that over time, communities do raise these these cutoffs, the impact of inflation, so on and so forth. And right now, the average price of a new car is probably, you know, in the 40s. Under some procurement rules, right now, you'd have to go for an RFP, which really doesn't make make a whole lot of sense. So we, you know, there's some, in a little discussion, or really a lot of discussion, just within the last, I'd say, 72 hours, about how much this would save, how much it would save the city. The the city is 41, we asked for a file of purchase orders for the last year. The city had 4,834 purchase orders. We got a great file from finance on this. There are 41 purchase orders of between 25 and 50,000. So we were trying to estimate the level of effort involved by the city to process an RFP, something in the range of 25 to 50,000. We got different estimates. We think the estimates were as low as 20 hours of effort to as high as 80 hours of effort on average. We think it's probably somewhere in the middle. And the reason it's in the middle is the, when there, when there is a procurement and RFP is involved, it involves the line departments for specking out the goods and services that are being procured. Okay, so public works, you know, he has to spec exactly what they're what they're looking for. And then there's a trickle, then it impacts finance and budgeting and the procurement man. But it can also involve legal. It can involve HR possibly, a variety of other areas. So we think it's more than 20 hours and maybe less than 80 hours. But the fact, the idea of circumventing the RFP process and focusing on the larger procurements, we think there could be significant savings for the city.
Say, say, Gordon?
Yes, go ahead.
Could you just explain to help everyone understand how we're getting to this? To saying 20 to 80, 80 hours, we're saying 40, you know, and then multiplying that out. But I think people need to understand, by moving this threshold, we're basically taking away the need to do RFPs. And the RFPs are expensive. And so maybe if you can just break down quickly, you know, what goes on tomorrow.
Yeah. Jerry, if you don't mind, I'll summarize this really quickly. So, well, just for context sake, too, the last time the thresholds were looked at was in 2013 for the city of Orem. And since then, inflation, a lot of things cost more than $25,000 nowadays. The reason that there is a spectrum of the time, the time and cost allowance between RFPs is because every project, it varies how large the scope of a project is. Some RFPs are shorter in their amount of time, some are larger. So that's why you see this large spectrum of cost savings. But when you don't have to go through RFP, when you don't have to spec out different vendors, when you don't have to create the legal agreements required for RFPs, when you don't have to go through the evaluation and interview process, that takes a long time. And we have a lot of purchases that fall in that that threshold. When you raise the threshold to $50,000 and eliminate all those little RFPs for little products that take a ton of time, sometimes the RFP process could cost more than the actual service. That is the benefit of raising a threshold for the finance department.
Right.
Exactly. Sorry, we have another another question here.
So in, if I am, in the last couple of years I've been on the council, I have noticed there have been occasions at the discretion of the city manager where we have circumvented that. And that is in our policies, where the city manager can say, we're not going to follow a formal RFP process because according what you're saying is it's more expensive to do that. Let's just, you know, take some of these lower cost proposals, evaluate them to some other standards. Okay, so you're saying we're kind of already doing that, but they're recommending, let's bump that up just so we have a better guideline in place.
Correct. The city, the city relies heavily on the experience and judgment of the department managers. Okay, so if you want, if you trust their judgment, then you really are paying discretion to 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 manage more of the procurement process. And if they are satisfied with a vendor or they've done discovery pricing through the state of Utah, or use a piggyback contract from a nearby community that has done a similar procurement, then, you know, put trust in your department manager. I mentioned the $40,000 a few minutes ago. I want to come back to that. Because in the, in the $35 to $50,000 range, 35 to 50, the average procurement is $40,000. Okay, in the $25 to $35,000 range, the average is 28,500. So just taking the average of the of the the procurements in the higher threshold, you're still well below $50,000 average. So and also, the ones over $50,000, there were 79. And they averaged $329,000 per procurement. So, you know, as Willie Sutton said, you go to the bank because that's where the money is. You want to focus a more detailed analytical procurement process on the higher value.
I might also say that, again, we'll rather emphasize that the RFP process or request proposal process is is more intense. Even if we raise this threshold, that doesn't mean we wouldn't go out to get multiple bids, or that, or again, like they're suggesting, we wouldn't look and see what other cities have done, or that we wouldn't go to the state procurement site and see what existing contracts and services that have already been bid out there. So.
Yeah, the department still have their due diligence in seeking out vendors and getting estimates from various vendors. It just takes away the all the paperwork and process.
Right.
That costs them so much time and money.
Right. It's just the RFP process is so defined and has so many steps to go through, it just becomes cumbersome on amounts, you know, lower than $50,000.
And and we deal with, at MGT, we deal with with RFPs from the other side of the table. And and, you know, we spend a lot of time on those. Not that you're looking for us to save us time, okay, but we have an appreciation of how involved it is for the the city, county or the state agency issuing the RFP. It can be months and months and months for for the the agency to issue and manage the procurement. So Bruce, should we go, should we go on to the next one, the procurement software?
Yeah. Just one, one other point on this is, because we were talking about this yesterday, but because we're talking about raising this number from 25,000 to 50,000, well, so is there a risk that, you know, somebody might not do it right, or somebody might get sloppy or whatever? That's always a risk, right?
There's so, there's so, it's a cost benefit. It's a cost benefit.
Sorry, Bruce. Bruce. Sorry.
So what I was trying to say is, with that in mind, we want to have some kind of a system where we spot check, you mentioned, or during the audit, where we randomly check a few of these RFPs, and it would be completely random. And it would be just to basically do a double check and say, okay, what was the process you followed? How'd you wind up? Where'd you wind up? Why did you do this? And so that would be a random site that would also incentivize everyone to do their best job when they're making those decisions. Yeah.
Right. And, you know, you want to make sure, and this would be, I see this as a role for the procurement manager. What you really want to see is, you know, did the department check the state's procurement website? Because they have blanket contracts. Did you check with nearby communities? They did something recent. It's it's, it's just a lot easier, faster than issuing an RFP.
At that point, wouldn't we have, you know, probably steps that a manager should follow that are the super simplified version of, you know, here's two, three, four, five things that they should do when they do these small purchases? So.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. So should we go on to the next question?
Any other, any final questions on the procurement thresholds? Yes, go ahead.
Okay. On the bottom of the screen, would better procurement software help? You know, that's a good question. You know, there are a lot of high powered ERPs, enterprise resource planning tools. You know, you've heard Oracle, you've heard SAP. You know, we don't advocate any, any, any software firm. There is, you know, they're sophisticated, they're powerful, they're also expensive, not just to buy and license, but also to install. We spoke with finance at length about this. And basically, they are very pleased with with their current systems. They said that they developed the systems internally, maintained by the city's IT department. Okay, they like what they have. Now, one thing we did do was we compared the capabilities of the city's system relative to procurement with the capabilities of, you know, the better known commercial off the shelf, you know, COTS software systems. And basically, what we found was, the city system does virtually everything that the that the commercial systems do. The only gap was in the area of quotation management. Now, we can see that as being valuable for a really large organization, where you have multiple departments buying similar commodities and services. You know, just so, what department A is not spending twice what department B is spending for the same thing. And we think there's value to that. We don't think that's much as much of a problem for the city of Orem. So we're not recommending that the city go out and, you know, replace its current systems. Okay. However, at some point in time, the city may find that it's necessary to replace what it has. You know, soft, the software may change, security issues may change. There could be a lot of reasons. Some of your systems analysts, IT personnel, may retire. You know, these people who are maintaining the systems may not be available any anymore. It's just at some point, and maybe two years from now, and maybe 10 years from now, the city may be in a position where it needs to replace its current software tools. At that point, you know, it may be appropriate to revisit this whole question about procurement software. At this point, we do not recommend that it's it's worth the city investing in this. So our recommendations are, one, increase the dollar thresholds. And you may want to inflate those periodically, you know, every two or three years, you know, see what the CPI is and go up from there. And then formalize the procurement research to verify that staff, you know, has checked the state of Utah, coordinated with other peer organizations like West Valley, Sandy, and so on. And that we could see as a role for the for the procurement manager.
Any, any questions on those two items?
I just want to make a point that this is the reason we're doing this, because a lot of times, when you're going along, you don't just naturally ask these questions. But when they're forced on, you know, you have to take a look, think. And so, you know, just one example there, by changing that procurement number from 25 to 50,000, that creates a $210,000 savings, you know, through the organization. And so, by making small changes like this, we can affect those kinds of changes.
Yeah. Yeah, no, this has been, seeing and working with all the departments and divisions, it's been a good, like you said, a process of self-reflection, really taking the time to reflect on current processes and practices. And, you know, putting them into question, putting them under the spotlight, seeing, oh, we are actually doing really good in this and we're leading in this. And then these other things that are really small that you probably wouldn't think about on a day-to-day basis that give the public more value for their, more bang for their buck, as, as this slide said.
I can also just, uh, make a conclusion mark too, that truly, this, this process has, has been genuine. We haven't come into this with cynicism, we're on a witch hunt, or asking baiting questions, or, or me like, you know, bullying Chief Adams to, you know, do something specific, wanting a specific result. It's truly with that attitude of continuous improvement, helping us understand and realize what we don't know, and, and having that, that self-reflection moment like Carson's talking about, to see if there's just things that we can, uh, you know, do a little better. I've appreciated our consultants in, in helping us, uh, approach this in that sphere, in that. I wanted to, any other comments, questions, concerns, feedback?
I think it's great. I, I just have a quick question. Are there, and maybe we don't know that yet, but are there those instances where we have lots of opportunities of a piggybacking, you know, there are opportunities to buy the same thing from different departments that we want to wear up before, uh, and increase even better cost savings? And maybe that's something that will come out as we go through this process. Uh, but yeah, this is a big, a big organization with a lot of things coming from a lot of different directions.
Yeah, just to answer your question about piggybacking, I think there is a lot of opportunity. We look and communicate with our sister cities all the time, um, because they provide similar services to what Orem does. Um, so we see what they do, we see what vendors they go with, and we know these cities, they go with high quality and cost efficient vendors, and so we can trust those if we do need to piggyback. And same with the state's procurement system.
I'd also say, Jeff, that there are a few different ways that we try to centralize purchasing of, of commodities that are used throughout the city. So, you know, recently we centralized our facilities maintenance and made its own internal service spots. We have a warehouse that brings in goods, people do, that, that are purchasing overseas. Warehouse is down in our public works building, and we bring in a lot of stuff that goes there, but is then sort of checked out from departments from, from that area. I don't know, I mean, sort of two areas that.
And IT, you do not, every department is not buying their own computers and tablets. IT has that centralized.
Perfect, thanks. Which, and, and again, those haven't always been centralized, they've really probably gotten things that have been centralized within the last twenty, twenty years. I'd say centralizing IT was probably one of the first things I was involved in when I first got hired on the business. Brandon, anything else you got to add to that?
Um, no, I mean, we, we, we use the state contracts a lot. All right, so, so I think that's a part of our process. Um, I think certainly figuring out maybe a more a better way to, uh, as Carson mentioned, finding out what other cities specifically have contracts with. Uh, if they're larger, of course, we do tend to look around and ask about those, especially if we're aware of a different, another city can be a particular change. Um, in the project related type of situations. I'm, I'm not sure how often we do it necessarily for the purchase of other things that aren't project based. So, but I could be an area where we try to improve on that substantially. You mentioned a checklist, um, for the most part, if we have a checklist, it's not documented. So, that, that is an area that we can potentially work with our IT staff as far as making sure we're, that that is identified as we go through those steps that that's signing off that, yes, we looked at that and that's the, because it wasn't that. We do that, it's just not, just not documented.
Question, any other questions? So, thank you Bruce and, and Jerry for joining today. And moving forward, again, we'll have more of these meetings, um, in chunks, again, with some future departments and divisions that we'll be talking about next time. Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, we'll move on to item number two. This is impact fee study, uh, reports from Trevor Bell.
Thank you, Eric. So we, Fred's a bot from, uh, LRB, our financial advisors, been, have been involved in our impact fees and moving that along. So today, uh, the goal is to have Fred kind of just outline a little bit about what impact fees are, what the process is, and how that's moving along, and some anticipated time, anticipated timeline for that process. Um, so, there's Fred. So at this point, Fred, I'll turn the time over to you.
Great, uh, and I, am I able to share my screen? Can I do that?
Yes.
All right, are you able to see that?
Yes.
Great. I think, thank you for having me and thank you for letting me present virtually. My name is Fred Philpott, I've been with, uh, LRB, uh, Public Finance for fifteen plus years, uh, working on impact fees, utility rate studies, economic development, feasibility studies, so all of our consulting work. Uh, you may know us as Louis Young Robertson in Burningham, we had a name change a little while ago, but, uh, uh, really just some new paint on the, the logo, but all, all the same people. Yeah, the, the presentation this evening is, is really to go through, um, the impact fee process and give you an idea of uh, what we're working through. Um, allow you to ask questions relative to impact fees, uh, and then give you an update on, uh, where we're at in the process. My understanding is there's some new council members, uh, who may or may not be familiar with the impact fee legislation and the process, and what goes into that initiative, and so I'll be talking through that. Again, if you have questions, uh, just let me know and, and happy to, um, talk through that. The statute, the Impact Fee Act requires that we complete an impact fee facilities plan and a proportionate share analysis or impact fee analysis. And, um, the impact fee facilities plan is, is where a, a lot of the planning occurs relative to capital infrastructure. And, um, be, because that document is heavily planning, planning intensive, it can often take a little bit of time to work through that. And frequently, um, engineers, uh, or, uh, transportation planners are engaged to complete that, that side of the work, which is the case for Orem. We have a team working together on your impact fees that includes Bowen Collins and Associates, um, and WCG, uh, uh, consulting group focused on transportation. They work through the planning initiative, and then, uh, when those documents are complete, then I take that information and conduct a proportionate share analysis and ask questions, necessary questions, and ensure that we're complying with the statute, and, uh, facilitate the adoption of the impact fee ordinance and, uh, make sure that everything's wrapped up. Um, in order to do that, there's specific, there's a specific, specific process we need to go through, uh, that I've highlighted here. We have to notice intent, we have to prepare those documents, um, the impact fee facilities plan and impact fee analysis, and those have to be certified uh, based on, uh, language found in the statute. Uh, we also need to, uh, present that information. Typically, we have a work session with you as a legislative body and go through all the details. And then, uh, it's required that we hold a public hearing, uh, to present information relative to the impact fees and allow public comment. And then, um, based on any changes, there's a ninety day wait period before those become effective. Um, the statute actually refers to any change in the impact fees taking a ninety day wait period. But in practice, it's usually if there's an increase to the fees that you wait ninety days before you assess that. For showing a decrease to the fees, most entities adopt that immediately. Um, and that's passed on to the, to the billing permit process. Uh, the city last updated impact fees in twenty eighteen, um, and then we were engaged to work on an update of that. Um, that study, so it has been a couple of years. Um, typically, we recommend impact fees be updated, updated every three or five years. Um, that's just a recommendation, there's no requirement in statute that, uh, that indicates the time limit that impact fees are valid. There is a six-year expenditure requirement, so, um, from the date you collect an impact fee, you have six years to expend those funds on related projects. And so based on that statutory requirement, um, the impact fee process is uh, narrowed down to a ten-year planning window with updates, uh, two to three times within that, within that planning horizon. Uh, however, some communities that may not experience a lot of growth or, um, infrastructure is substantially built out, they may not uh, have the need to update impact fees as regularly. Uh, so when we work through an impact fee facilities plan and impact fee analysis, there are six steps that are really required for all studies. So understanding those six steps, um, will help you as you look at the specific impact fees or services, um, that the city provides. The six steps include, uh, determining demand, uh, providing an inventory of existing facilities, then establishing an, establishing an existing and future level of service. So it's critical for the impact fee to be based on your existing level of service. Um, then you identify existing and future facilities necessary to serve growth. Um, often it's a combination of existing assets as well as new infrastructure that will benefit new development activity. Fifth step is a consideration of all revenue resources, both past, uh, and, and future that may be needed or have been used to fund infrastructure. Uh, for example, you may have debt, uh, outstanding bonds that are utilized to build infrastructure, and we can include the interest costs associated with that debt. Uh, you may receive, uh, funding from, uh, alternative sources like, uh, regional transportation uh, organizations, and we need to account for that when calculating the impact fee. So looking at all of those revenue streams and ensuring that the impact fee reflects the true cost that your residents should bear relative to building infrastructure. Then the sixth and final step is the proportionate share analysis where we bring everything together, uh, as part of our study. As we look at the demand, it's important to note that, um, you have to define a specific service area. Most entities will establish a single citywide service area for, uh, ease of administration and to ensure that um, the infrastructure, um, the system infrastructure is allocated to all development within the community, um, because in most cases, they benefit from that combined, that combined asset. Uh, in some cases, uh, service areas are identified, um, based on geographic boundaries or specific service provisions. But in, uh, regardless of the service area boundary, the, um, uh, the requirements remain the same, that we need to look at the demand, the specific demand within the service area and relative to the service that is being evaluated. For example, um, in public safety, for public safety, we typically look at calls for service. Whereas parks and recreation will look at, uh, population. Uh, on roads, we look at trips, so it's, it's the specific demand relative to the, the service that we're looking at. And then we make projections regard, regarding, uh, existing and future demand to evaluate the impact on the system. Uh, as we look at level of service, um, the statute, uh, defines existing and proposed level of service. And the impact fee, uh, needs to ensure that the, the fee assessed is maintaining the existing level of service unless you identify alternative funding mechanisms that increases the level of service for your existing residents uh, absent of the impact fee collection. So, for example, you could have, uh, some regulatory impacts relative to sewer or water that impact both existing and, and, uh, future residents and, and, uh, potentially could be perceived as an increase in the level of service. As part of the impact fee process, we can identify, uh, funding mechanisms that raise that level of service for your existing residents and then use that, uh, that, uh, higher level of service to determine the impact fee for future development. But we have to identify that funding mechanism to connect the dots um, in the impact fee facilities plan and impact fee analysis. Uh, looking at existing facilities, um, this is a critical component, again, because often existing facilities uh, are necessary to serve new development in addition to any proposed future facilities. Uh, when we include existing facilities in the calculation of the impact fee, this is often called a buy-in component. Meaning new development is going to buy in or pay you back for investment you've made in the past uh, for infrastructure that they're going to benefit from. Uh, a great example of that is a defined capacity, uh, component of your system like a storage tank, a water storage tank. Often those are oversized to handle growth and, uh, new development can pay you back for that oversizing until it reaches capacity, and then that's when that new facility is triggered. We take the averaging of that cost and that's the basis for the impact fee calculation. The statute requires though, that when we include any buy-in component, we have to use the original value of that asset. So if you constructed that in nineteen seventy, then we use the cost at that time, including any, uh, repairs and, and improvements to maintain that asset uh, on a capital basis to make it, uh, available to, uh, to new development. But we don't use a, uh, a replacement value, a depreciated replacement, it is the original cost of that asset that is included in the calculation of the fee. Usually what that means is when we include a buy-in component, it often has the result of um, averaging the impact fee towards a lower, a, a lower number because we're using that historic cost rather than a future cost when determining the fee. And that's not always the case, um, especially if you have a lot of outstanding debt where there's an interest cost associated with that buy-in. That, that can, uh, push the fee up, but in a lot of cases, it, it results in a slightly lower average fee. Uh, once we've identified, uh, excess capacity, um, then we determine the facilities necessary to serve new development, the new facilities. And, um, in that process, the impact fee facilities plan is often a, a narrowing of, of cost. So, uh, you'll develop as, as part of a, uh, uh, your role as a, as a government, uh, master plans and capital improvement plans. Um, your master plan is that bigger picture, your capital improvement plan, uh, puts timing and cost, uh, uh, to, and, and prioritizes those improvements. The impact fee facilities plan is, uh, is one more step where we look at tho, those projects and say, okay, of those project, projects, what do we anticipate in the next ten years? And what percentage of those projects are necessary for growth? So that's one element that we have to consider. In addition, we have to look at and remove any, uh, projects that are repair and replacement or deficiency related, so non-growth related projects. And then also identify any projects that may be increasing the level of service and ensure that there's appropriate consideration for uh, those types of projects. So the result, uh, that often happens when we look at um, the impact fee facilities plan is you often start with a much higher at a master plan, uh, cost that then is narrowed down to your capital improvement plan. And then the impact fee facilities plan narrows those costs even further down to what is considered growth-related uh, system improvements. So, yeah.
If I can just make a point of emphasis here, so lest, uh, anyone on the council think that we've been sitting on our hands since the last update, what Fred's talking about here is, is important, that it's really just a few short years after. It's really just a few short years after we updated our impact fees in twenty eighteen. Then we essentially restart this process really at the moment that we update our master plans. Our capital facilities plans and then since we've updated, uh, those. Now we're at the point of narrowing down further and going through this impact fee stepping process.
Yes, and, uh, that, that's a great point because it's. It applies to the process we're going through right now, often. The planning process takes time to work through all of the capital needs and level of service issues. Um, it, it's not a quick process and in order for it to be defensible. We recommend that you do what, what Orem is doing, which is engage engineers. Um, and staff to, to go through that planning initiative so that the end product. Um, is a defensible impact fee facilities plan that focuses on the growth-related projects that can be applied to. Uh, to the impact fee analysis. Um, so yeah, it's not, it's not quick, um, uh, to work through that, all, all that planning and often. Um, you can get through the planning process and realize, uh. Uh, there's some additional considerations, whether that be regulatory requirements that have kind of come down from the federal government or the state. That have to be reconsidered and it's, it's a iterative process, so. Um, that, uh, planning initiative is very important. And then it's also to, uh, important to remember that, once it's done, as, as Bryn indicated. Um, it doesn't just sit on the shelf for, uh, six years, often entities will, will open it up and say, okay, what. Um, it's a year later, are those assumptions valid, do we need to amend any of this, and so I've worked through with entities. Where we'll amend specific components of a study, say, transportation, we look at it and. Some of the assumptions are no longer holding true, we amend that specific service, open it up, go through an amendment process. And then recalculate the fees. Um, so many entities will do that, uh, on a case-by-case basis and revise fees as needed. Um, so, once we bring all of that together again, this is the culmination of those first five steps. Um, into the proportionate share analysis and, uh, this graph is designed or, or illustration is, is designed to, to show how that is. Uh, how that is evaluated, and again, the primary driver. Of your impact fee is demand and level of service, so we have to determine demand. And that demand, uh, determines or, or triggers. The, uh, facilities, both existing and future that are included in the impact fee calculation. Uh, all matching whatever the existing level of service is. So you may have a lot of costs and, um, level of service increases that fall outside of that. Uh, that demand variable and the impact fee has to exclude that, we have to keep that out of the equation and only include. The new facilities and existing facilities and any financing associated with that specific demand variable. So, uh, uh, understanding that is, is very beneficial as you think about impact fees and their purpose. And ensuring that there's a proportionate or fair allocation of cost, uh, to your new development activity. Um, it's also important to note that demand can, uh, can look like, uh. Uh, different things for different communities, for Orem. Uh, demand can look like redevelopment where you already have existing development and you're changing the nature of that and adding. Uh, whether that's density or new commercial development, uh, overlaying existing development, so. That's a, an, a, a different consideration than just, uh, raw ground where you're just adding new capacity, so. In, in some regards, you're replacing existing demand with more intense demand and you have to, uh, um. Consider that in the proportionate share calculation. So, in this process, the impact fees that are under review include water, water supply, uh, water reu- reuse. So, your, your culinary water system, we're looking at wastewater, stormwater, roadways, parks and recreation and public safety. As I mentioned, Bowen Collins and Associates is helping on the impact fee capital facility planning initiative and impact fee facilities plans for. Water, wastewater and stormwater. Uh, WCG is working on the IFFPs, the IFFP for roadways and, um, and I. Copied in a wrong name, so it's not a LYRB. Um, so pretend you didn't see that and don't tell Jason or Laura that I, uh. That I had LYRB on the screen or, um, you may not see me in the next presentation. Uh, so we will be doing the parks and recreation and public safety IFFP. Um, we will also do all of the impact fee analysis for, uh, the, uh, each of the services, so we bring it all together. Um, and again, ensure that, that the, uh, process is defensible, that we've. Um, completed all the noticing requirements and we compile the project transcript. That includes all of the necessary information relative to this process. Um, with regards to where we're at on those documents. Um, Bowen Collins completed an ni- an initial draft relative to the capital facilities plan and impact fee facilities plan for. Water, uh, but then further analysis was, uh, requested, is my understanding, relative to both water and sewer. Uh, so, um, Keith Larson at Bowen Collins is working through that side to determine, uh, how to. Um, provide that additional analysis that is, uh, potentially requested. Um, so, so I received an initial draft for the IFFPs, but. Uh, again, um, Keith indicated that were some additional analysis that is being requested. Stormwater, I have not seen an IFFP yet, so that is still in process and there are some unique, um, factors relative to. The storm system that they're trying to work through, uh, with staff. To ensure that they're accounting for the appropriate level of service and demand variables. Um, I'll point out that storm is a tricky one because it is not typically a defined capacity system, meaning. Um, it's, it's, uh, you don't have a storage tank, for example, you, that you know you're going to get, uh, a million gallons out of. Uh, stormwater has to do with those storm events and pipe size and, uh. Elevation and drainage systems, and so there's just a lot more, um. Not uncertainty, but nuance associated with the, the storm planning. Similarly, transportation is, is a system like stormwater where. Um, improvements relieve pressure in the system and it frees up capacity where, uh, where there may not have been capacity, but. Transportation, we do have a draft, uh, IFFP of the transportation system. Uh, staff has provided a preliminary review and will be, uh, will be working through their comments to finalize that. Um, with regards to public safety and parks, we have initial models completed on our side. Um, and we're awaiting the engineering IFFPs to ensure that we're telling the same story across all documents, so we want to make sure that. Uh, for example, growth assumptions are consistent across all IFFPs, we don't want to tell a growth story that. In one doc, planning document that differs from another, so. Uh, we typically wait until we can see all of those documents, pull it all together and then. Provide feedback where there may be questions or inconsistencies. Again, our role is to, uh, quarterback some of that, um, that process to ensure defensibility. Uh, where we go from there, once we have the IFFPs completed, again, we calculate all the impact fees. And then we will come back to you in a work session and present that information. Uh, address questions you may have, look at scenarios or alternative considerations. And then based on your input as a legislative body, we finalize the documents and prepare for the adoption phase. Uh, it's important to keep in mind there are specific noticing requirements relative to this process. Um, and I'll work with staff to make sure all the noticing gets completed. Uh, but I, I thought I'd just let you know what that looks like, um, you have to complete a notice of intent to be, begin the process, which has already been done. Then there's a noticing process and requirement as it, uh, relates to the public hearing, um. Uh, typically, uh, you need a ten-day notice period and there's specific steps you have to work through to, in preparation for the public hearing. Then you hold the public hearing and you have the, uh, uh. Option to take action the night of the public hearing, most entities do that. They'll, um, uh, take action the night of the public hearing and adopt impact fees. Uh, but that's not required, you just have to hold the public hearing and then you can take action on a future meeting, but. Uh, once you take action again, um, any change to that impact fee, uh, typically an increase. There's that ninety day wait period before they become effective, it allows development to. Uh, pull building permits under, uh, potential, their potential pro formas that have considered the older fee. They can get those building permits pulled, um, and it doesn't affect their pro formas. Um, and then, uh, the effective date of the impact fees is, is ninety days after that. Uh, the, the adoption of the ordinance, so that's the critical, uh, piece of, uh, this process. It's the ordinance that, that makes the impact fees effective, and so when you adopt that. Um, that, uh, the effective date of the impact fees is ninety days later. Alrighty, that was a, a pretty quick, uh, crash course on impact fees and where we're at. Um, questions regarding process or methodology or, um, or timeline?
No? Sounds like there aren't any, Fred, so thank you so much for, uh, both the education and, and the look ahead.
Yes, and I'm sure there'll be, as you think about this, uh, questions, I'm happy to field those. Uh, through staff, if that's the way you'll work through that. Um, and then as we get to the work session, um. I'm, I'm sure we'll have lots of discussion there on the specifics of, of each of the services and, and how it impacts your communities, but. Thank you for letting me present and, uh, I hope you have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Brad.
All right, moving on to item number three. CDVG background and priority. Ken Ransom and Jessica Delora.
Standing or sitting, do you have a? I think we do have a presentation.
Hello, everyone, I know a few of you and been before a few times, but I'm Ken Ransom. Happy to be here representing our city's CDVG advisory commission again. I got Jessica with me and let her take over.
I'm Jessica Delora, I'm the Director of Community and Economic Development at. Mountain Land Association of Governments, that's MPO, MAG. Um, MAG recently took on administration of Orem's CDVG program, um, in July of this past year. And so we're here to talk about the upcoming application cycle, so. And just for a little background, MAG also administers CDVG programs on behalf of Utah County, Lehigh City. Eagle Mountain City and then Summit, Wasatch Counties through the Small Cities Program, so we've got a really good experienced team. Okay, so as I mentioned, we, we call that the FY twenty-four application cycle. Oh, I can see it, I actually remember that. Okay, so for, I know we have a couple of new council members, if you already know this information, then forgive me for repeating, but it's always a good refresher. Um, the purpose of the CDVG program as defined by HUD is to assist, um, developing viable communities. Providing decent housing and suitable living environments and expanding economic opportunities, predominantly for low and moderate income residential. Uh, residents, so that is a lot of HUD speak for what this program is, but it really does provide a lot of. Um, control and opportunity at the local level, so essentially. HUD will award Orem City a chunk of money every year to carry out a program, but the decisions on how that money is spent on what projects is made at this level. There are of course parameters and, um, regulations around how the money can be used. But there is, as I said, a lot of flexibility, so it can look like. Funding, um, public facilities, you know, senior centers, libraries, things like that. Fire stations, it can look like infrastructure, water and sewer line upgrades, um, it can look like, um. Partnering with agencies to provide therapy to abused children or the domestic violence shelter. Or food banks, things like that, so lots of variety, it can also be used for economic development initiatives that provide, um, jobs for low and moderate income residents. Things of that nature, so. Any questions just on the general idea of CDVG? Okay. So to talk about the, um, twenty-four cycle, we are in the pre-application and application process right now. I, I'll go through the timeline with you in a little bit, but we start the process in October. And we have a how-to-apply workshop where we, um, collect anyone who's interested in CDVG, has a project in mind and we go over the basics. Make sure that what they have in mind aligns with the goals of the CDVG program and would be a viable project. We then have them submit pre-applications, those we'll do in December, and then in January, we, um, meet with those applicants one-on-one to. Further refine their scope of work and their budget and make sure again that it would be compliant, um, and a suitable project, so. For this cycle, we have, um, twenty-five pre-applications submitted by public service agencies. And proposed projects, um, included, as I said, food banks, senior services, um, substance use disorder services. Healthcare, um, and services to victims of domestic violence, homelessness, et cetera. Um, of those twenty-five, twenty-two of the pre-applications were submitted by, um, organizations that are currently grantees of the CDVG program. So they have a contract for this past year and are executing projects, so a lot of experience, um, from those partners. We also this year have three pre-applications from new organizations, so Tempanogus Legal Center, Senior Charity Care and Fit to Recover. So, um, it will be interesting to see what projects they have in mind and, and how it aligns with what Orem City wants to do.
Can I ask you, do you have nonprofits, those are nonprofits, I guess.
Yes.
Cause they. Do you have nonprofits that already cover those services, are, are these unique services?
Uh, they are, so as far as CDVG funding goes, um, none of these specific services are currently being funded, so Tempanogus Legal Center. Um, provides legal advice at a free clinic and then document workshops and, uh, I believe they're the only organization doing that. Pro bono for low and moderate income residents in the county. Um, Central Hospital might provide that specifically to their client base, but. Um, the Senior Charity Care, they provide mobile, um, vision and dental care for seniors, so that's. Also something we don't currently have, Fit to Recover is an interesting one, um, it's a fitness center and community center. For people with substance use disorders, um, it's physical fitness, but also community oriented to. Provide them extra support as they are in the recovery process, so. Those are the new ones and, and we're meeting with them to kind of talk about their vision and make sure that it's a good fit, so.
Do you ever get applications from, uh, nonprofits that maybe, I don't know what's the right word to use, but would compete? With the ones we're already servicing with funding?
Um, we have a pretty good community of nonprofit service providers that all know each other and either work together or fill in the different gaps. There are some organizations like, um, the County Children's Justice Center and Family Haven, they both provide therapy services to. Um, families and abused children specifically, but we do find that the need is pretty great and that, um. Both of them are working to meet that need, that they're not really competing with each other.
And I guess I'm thinking too, I mean, five oh one three, you know, you hear nonprofit, but nonprofits make money.
Sure.
They, you know, they're a business to make money too, but they didn't provide a service. So I guess I'm wondering, is there opportunity for new startups? Of nonprofits, are those opportunities there or is there a barrier to entry because we already have these.
Oh.
Funding.
Okay, I see your question. Place. Yeah, so the, the pre-application is open to any agency that attends that how-to-apply workshop, so any new nonprofits that. Come along in our community, they can do the pre-application. What we do is just screen to make sure that their project is eligible according to the CDVG regulations and that they would meet those things. Once we verify that they are eligible, they'll go through the full application process. Um, and then that gets vetted by the citizen commission and then ultimately the, the final project list is approved by city council, so. Yeah, our view is just to make sure that they're compliant and if they are, to help them create a, a good application for you to consider.
So you vet the initial qualifications and then it goes to our commission.
Yep.
To then decide where to fund.
Yep.
Good.
Yep, absolutely.
So you, I think where they might be going with this is, do you see much movement on and off of who's getting CDVG funding and who's not? In other words, you know, the twenty-two that are on there, is there much chance that they would, some of those would come off, another, who wouldn't go on, how does that work? What does it look like?
Yeah, it does depend, um, we also, we have requirements from HUD that we have to spend the money in a time and fashion, and so we can't have a lot of fun sitting there in the treasury department. So, for example, if a nonprofit has a current award and they're not able to spend it down quickly enough, they can't apply the upcoming cycle, they have to spend down that award. So we'll have some that apply every other year or some that have a special project that they want funded, that's a one-time thing. Um, so we can do like capital improvement projects with nonprofits, that might be a one-time thing, um, some agencies, you know. It's a lot of work to have a federal grant and so. And so sometimes they have the staff capacity to do that and sometimes they don't. So it fluctuates a little bit, but we do have a couple regulars that are always in the mix and they provide really important services and know what they're doing. So.
Did you say that the deadline is passed to apply for twenty-four?
For the pre, yep. So you had to have had a pre-application submitted in December.
Okay, so people that are listening to this that didn't make that, they wouldn't need applied this year?
Yep. Yep. So they can reach out to us. I don't know how you want me to show that information, but we'll put them on our mailing list for the how to apply workshops that happen in October. So that's when we start.
And I'm sorry, because I don't know if this is in your presentation, but I mean, personally, I'm always interested in, because our funds are allocated per city, right?
Yep.
So I'm always interested in making sure that our funds go to residents in Orem. I know we partner, you know, there's nonprofits that serve both, but is, are you watching that? Do you allocate that?
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's something we've been working closely with HUD on because as you know, most of our nonprofits are physically located in Provo, but serve clients throughout the region. We're also working with Provo and Utah County to take a regional approach to funding so that we reduce the administrative burden on those nonprofits so that they can carry out the services and not do a lot of reporting and applying and drawdowns from multiple entities. So we do have a regional committee that looks at and makes recommendations about public service. But we as staff always have to balance to make sure that whatever gets funded by Orem City is serving Orem City clients. So it's regional in the decision-making, but when it comes down to the actual administration, beneficiaries and drawdowns, that's our work in administration to make sure that the dollars line up with who's receiving.
And then I watch Doug, Ken and his group.
Yep. Yep. To fill that role also, right?
Right. And our first question is always, how many Orem residents do serve? Because we know that's an important question. We presented this to the council, but that's going to be a question.
And there are some, you know, some balancing that has to happen. For example, the refuges are only domestic violence shelter and service provider in the region. And there may be instances where their funder is Provo City, but for some quarter, most of their clients came from outside of Provo City. And so that can be a tricky balance and we work on those on a case-by-case basis. But there is value in keeping that function there and the service available because it is the only place for Orem residents to go, even if in that quarter, it didn't totally align. So we work with the subrecipients and with HUD to figure out the best way to handle that kind of situation. So along with these outside agencies that apply, there are also some Orem City projects that get funded on a year-to-year basis. So victim services, homeless services, neighborhood revitalization, and code enforcement, those are the types of activities taken on by the city that are usually funded in part at least with CDVG funds. So it's not just nonprofits in the community, it's also the city. We also, in the current year, we, the Parks Department is doing a signage project in one of your target neighborhoods. So things like that.
It's like a one-time, I mean, that's like a one year.
Yeah, yeah. So usually it's one big project that they'll apply for in the year. We'll get that project done. And then we're working with Heather and the Department heads to identify city projects in the upcoming year, one-time projects that would be a good fit.
Right, we've got Sharon for one year, playgrounds and whatnot. And that was one of the projects. Last one, Beable?
So just a really brief sketch of the timeline and anticipated funding. We don't have final numbers from HUD for the upcoming year, so we always base it off of last year's allocation and then make adjustments. It usually doesn't change by much, but we do have some, as the decisions are made, some contingency, if we receive less, then we'll take that money from this project or we'll divide it between all the projects and reduce them by ten percent, something like that. But we anticipate around six hundred and twenty-five thousand. So timeline, as I mentioned, we have applications due this upcoming month in February. So we're doing the site visits right now just to provide that technical assistance to the applicants, make sure they have a good application to submit. So we will review a staffless applications in February and then in March is when the committees and commissions meet to review and vet those. As I mentioned, we work with Provo and Utah County on a regional committee to vet public service projects. And they make funding recommendations for all of those services and agencies that benefit the entire region. After that meeting, then the cities, Citizen Commission meets and looks at all the Orem City projects as well and vets those and interviews the applicant. And then in April, Ken will be back and probably someone on my staff to make a presentation on that list of recommendations for you for your information. And then we'll hold a public comment period in April and May. And then be back again in May to get the final approval by the council. And then that's when MAG staff will take over, getting the environmental reviews prepared, getting subrecipient agreements prepared and all that stuff. And then July one is the grand start date.
And if I may as well, the Utah, the combined committee, we have some of our Citizen Commission sits on that. And that process is they submit their applications and then they'll make presentations. And the ask is always significantly higher than the funding available. So it's a difficult process of saying, you know, who do you fund? You do not fund. You give everybody this, give everybody a certain amount. And so that is, you know, where that process, to me at least, says this, these are needs that are real and it's a very good program and this provides funding that. It fills important gaps, I think, for a committee. It's good benefits our residents here in Orem. And as our individual city commission serves on this committee and we're looking at what benefits Orem. But what's, I think really cool about this is that the city and the county, the cities and counties have cooperated and collaborating. And so when I first started on this, we were, Orem was doing a couple thousand here, a couple thousand here, and Provo was doing this, the county is doing this. And now there's this cooperation and pooling of resources so that the oversight is simpler. And anyway, I think it's a good, to me, it's been fun to watch and it's been a great process to see that this, just this cooperation that people say government can't run together, but it's, I think, a great example of these organizations working together, the cities and then county and MAG, et cetera. So just wanted to put that in there. And then in March also, we consider the cities. The city's always had asks for like neighborhood preservation, repaying that loan that the city council twenty years ago did on University Parkway. You know, there's that loan that's being paid back too. So some of that funding already, we can't say no to that. We have, of course, we're going to support that funding. But the next slide, I guess where we're going with this is, so for the account for our commission, is we'd like to know what on this, on the combined funding that we're working out. The city, I know this is when the city brings these proposals. We know the city, that's a priority for the city, because the city's applying, the city's saying, we want to do this with this funding. So but we'd like some council priorities with this combined funding that we're doing with the county and MAG and with and with Provo City. Now, what are the priorities and what's, there's, as I mentioned earlier, there's more asks than there are funding available. And so of course, we're going to focus on what benefits Orem residents. And then the question for you is, and that's, I think, what an important thing we want to get out here. So I'd like to put each of you on the spot, totally kidding. We'll put you on the spot and help sort of prioritize that. If you could before March.
I may just give you a couple of things that at least I've heard and then, and then of course, Jessica will take you up on getting decrements of information. So we'd love to hear kind of the full schedule. Then after we get through our approval process, then we want to help get the word out to either, you know, nonprofit organizations in the city for getting to those how-to apply meetings. But I've heard a lot of emphasis from our mayor council in supporting our Hispanic community and how it's there. And then we've been talking a lot about some public safety facilities with like a training facility for fire and reconfiguring our public safety building. And then, and we've talked about as this building, as we move into our new city center, this building comes down, doing some reconfiguring that with our libraries. So those would be at least my shoe from the hip responsible on that. But I don't want to get ahead of you as a council. And of course, can they reach out to you directly, Jessica? And then Ken, I think we have, Mayor, we have a council liaison to our CDVG group as well that we can help us with.
Jan.
Which is Jan.
Yes, me and I had a meeting a couple hours ago with J B and Tiller.
Yep, sounds great.
Good, okay, good.
Just a woman, Mayor, council, anything else you would have had to take away? Comes up.
Also, as you're, as you're thinking about your priorities for potential projects, there are a lot of little ins and outs about what you can and can't do with CDVG funds. And that's where we can help. So you don't need to dive into the regulations. If you want to just talk through some ideas with us, we'd be happy to do that with you at any point and figure out if it fits with CDVG funding or not. What we don't want to do is get projects that aren't a good fit and then we're trying to meet all the compliance requirements and that we monitor and it's a mess. So we want to make sure we have really good projects that are a good fit. Yes.
So one of the things we've talked about as well is revitalizing some of our older neighborhoods. And you guys did, I mean, the Pickle Law Courts, it's sharing part, or a classic example of the old West United is to that area. And so I mean, any of those kinds of things that we can do to kind of bring and regenerate, renew single house, single house neighborhoods would be priorities as well.
One thing we do find fun right now is it's a critical home repair program in the city. And so a lot of those homes are in need of repair because they need help. They say someone is elderly or disabled or just really low income and their houses, the floor is rotting through or the roof is leaking. And so we use CDVG funds and we have to go through an application process that comes through us. And then we work to help them, to the contractor, to get funds. And some of those funds are grant. If they're very low income, some of them are a loan. But it's a zero percent interest deferred loan so they can, you know, get their house to be in a winnable state and improve it, you know, if it looks really bad. So we do have that, but looking to other issues too, if there's ways we can help.
But what does that look like as far as, I mean, Brad mentioned several priorities. They're all fairly expensive capital projects. So what does CDVG look like in the context of that as far as, you know, we recommend to apply for one or two or focus, how do you put that all together?
Yeah, like I say, there are certain requirements, like there are various requirements that has to benefit the colonel, the low and moderate income, or at least fifty, fifty-one percent of it has to benefit low and moderate income. So you have to initiate it in that context. The capital projects, I think especially, like, correct me if I'm wrong, we would have to really look at the regulations to see if, if we would fit into that category or if we don't get monitored.
And I'll speak just from my experience with CDVG. I've been doing this for about nine years. And from my perspective, it is better to really come focused as a city to evaluate, what do we really need? What's a party, what's a good CDVG fit versus we can pay for these other projects? I think it's smart to come with one or two really great projects because the administration of it is burdensome. Even for your city staff, you know, they, they're spending a lot of time complying, reporting. And we're doing as much technical assistance as we can, but it does require a lot of their time. And when you break up projects, for example, you know, water or sewer lines, you do a block at a time if you're using out on that. You know, that efficiency of doing a whole group of blocks at a time. So your construction costs are higher and things like that when you do it little by little. So we recommend big projects focused and the city kind of being unified in that idea.
What would be a big gift from the CDVG as far as out of that six hundred and twenty-five thousand going to one place?
Yeah, so again, it's up to the council ultimately and the commission who would make those recommendations. But of that six hundred and twenty-five thousand, only fifteen percent of that can go to public service activities. So those nonprofits, they can only take up to fifteen percent of that. And that includes like your victim services and things like that. And then there's of course administrative cost from MAGS where we carve out about fourteen percent. You're allowed twenty percent for admin. And then the rest is really focused on what the city sees as priority. So it's, it's really your choice.
Could any of us go towards the heat program that you now manage?
You could do utility assistance. I wouldn't see that as the best use of CDVG. That's just because we have adequate funding from the state for heat right now for utility assistance. And that would fall into that fifteen percent. So it kind of chips away at that while there are other resources.
One thing at the retreat, I think the council mentioned also was a neighborhood where it may not have a better sidewalk yet. There might be a ditch that is abandoned or still used or whatever, without people's kids.
Yep.
About those low-income neighborhoods.
Yeah, that's a pretty common type of project.
So our Neighborhood Commission is interested in finding service of being able to provide service for projects that are funded. Do you, does that happen? Is that something? That's just kind of the vibe that I've heard from these people that I'm talking to. You know, they just want to serve. They want to find ways to serve and, you know, you gotta have, if you want to help someone lay sod, you gotta have somebody that gave them sod.
Right, okay.
Do you coordinate? Is that some of those?
So we're talking about kind of volunteer work on CDVG funded projects?
Yeah, in renewing a community. So.
Yeah, so it depends on the project type. So for example, if you want to do a park, you want to build a park out of nothing or revitalize a park, you can hire contractors to do that work. And if you do that, Davis Vacant Wage requirements apply. But you can have people also volunteer to come do some labor on that. So you could organize certainly volunteer labor as part of that. If they want to come, you know, hang the swings and put the woodchips in and all that kind of stuff, you can volunteer for that kind of work.
How about as far as, we talked about homes that are in disrepair and they've got programs where the churches will get together and help fix up those homes. But how about the materials for those individual homes? Could you have, could you have a pool of money that's going to that?
Yeah, so if it was, if it was applications perhaps through the Critical Home Repair Program, CDVG could pay for the materials and then you could use volunteer labor instead of contractor labor. Yeah, there's some organizing efforts in that and also general supervision and insurance issues, but it's certainly doable.
Because I figured you had those.
Yeah. Yeah. And we, MAG also operates the weatherization program and we have other single family rehab projects and things like that. And we also have a volunteer coordinator who matches up, you know, people who are interested in doing that kind of volunteer work with the program. So we definitely partner and organize some of that. That's something they're interested in.
Any other questions? Ken, I think we're.
Ken.
Good, thank you.
I'm just going to give you my email address, but Heather has it and it's versed it. It's J Delora, J as in Jessica, B E L O R A at mountainland.org.
Can you say that again?
Yep, J Delora, B E L O R A at mountainland.org.
Mayor, I do not just send them that.
Yeah, lots of people have it, but just FYI. So if you shoot me an email, I can get back to you. I can read myself on it. We'd be happy to talk through it. I guess it's much easier to do it ahead of time if we get through before we get to application stage. So please, please.
I think what we'll do is just follow up. Heather, maybe within the House of Council and Mayor, discussing the projects that we talked about today and then all the contact information.
Yep.
And also as a council, we should keep in mind that gents over coordination with the CDVG. So anything.
Funnel it through them.
Yeah, put them on a tier or answer me on coordinate.
I love that. Thank you.
Hey, next up we've got presentation number four. Victim Advocates Debate. And Chief Adam Hope, lead the presentation.
Well, while they're plugging it in, Mayor Council want to thank you for sharing a couple of things with you this afternoon regarding family issues that we were addressing inside of our city right now. We appreciate the emphasis the city has on families and as we have, as a police department, been deliberating with some of the the objectives you've laid out for Family City USA. One of the continual issues that we are perpetual to, that is increasing, is the amount of domestic violence. is the amount of domestic violence that's occurred inside our city right now. Um, it's actually on quite a sharp increase of, especially over the last year and, uh, years preceding that. Um, you know, we had a, in time, we had a, uh, COVID, uh, kind of spiked it and, and at that point we were like, okay, well, everybody stuck at home and it was all the stress and it was all okay, so that's a can, that's now come and gone and the problem is actually continuing to increase, uh, in alarming ways. Um, and, um, we, I know it's been about two years since we've, uh, been able to present anything on, on our domestic, domestic violence and, uh, uh, victim advocate program. Other than I know that you, we, uh, introduced you to our dog a couple of weeks ago, but, uh, she's not as busy as, uh, as some of the rest of the people who work with this stuff. So I wanted to introduce Lieutenant Carolyn Tracy and Sergeant Glenn Giles, who are the, uh, administrators and supervisors over our entire domestic violence and victim advocate program. To talk with them.
So we kind of, we're gonna start out and it's gonna be a nine one one call and it is a little bit worrying. It's a little bit disturbing. Um, it is the reality of what we get fifteen, twenty times a day. So we're just gonna play just a little bit of clip of that to start and then we'll talk about what was behind this and what we would add. This first time.
Nine one one, city?
Oh my God!
What is the address of your emergency?
Eleven forty-four South Fifty East.
Eleven forty-four South Fifty East, five zero east?
Either way, I'm hurt. My husband's got a, I'm flat.
Okay.
Oh my God!
Listen to me, let's get some help. What, is this a house or an apartment?
This is an apartment.
Your phone number?
Sorry.
What is your phone number?
Eight oh one three six nine seven five nine three.
Nine seven five nine three?
Oh my God!
Okay, okay, I need you to take a deep breath and tell me what's going on with your husband. Tell me exactly what's happening.
He just had his throat slit.
He had a.
I got to find, I don't, his throat, his.
Bite?
Oh my God, please just hurry.
You're saying that your husband's throat has been slit?
Yes.
Okay, hurry. Who did this?
My son.
Your son?
So I know that nine one one is, is hard to even want to hear and listen to, but honestly to understand. Um, it was a case that happened in November of twenty twenty-one down in the south end of our city. A, an adult male, um, went in and their family has experienced domestic violence for years. He was very violent, our victim and suspect. During the course of his life, gentleman had enough and he took a knife and slit his own father's throat. That gentleman took off running. We encountered him several hours, well, probably a couple minutes, several minutes later and ended up in an officer involved shooting with him. And unfortunately, he's come to his injuries as well. Father did not. I think he was going to hospital for a couple of hours. Um, the person making the call is the nine one one, or the nine one one call is the mother and of the vic, of the son, excuse me, and the spouse. It was her, it was her husband that had his throat slit. And this was another case that occurred the same, around the same timeframe. This is a thirty-year-old female. She was a mother of two. She was, this is up in the north end. Um, she was one of our homicides. I think the next one occurred two weeks later. They're all victim domestic violence related. Um, this young lady with two children, her children were in the home while she was brutally beaten and, uh, tortured for days before she also should come to her injuries. We got called to those, um, both those calls, I believe it was in a two-week timeframe. Her children, young children, um, witnessed a lot of the violence and are currently living with family members, probably seven houses away from where it happened. Cause that's all that they, they can do. Luckily, they've got family to take them in. Um, he's obviously in jail and I don't think that, I think he fled last, two months ago.
So this is just a case that we took this week. Um, we had a husband and wife got into an argument. We had several domestic related cases in the past. One of them involving a knife, which he had an outstanding case for on an aggravated assault. Um, he fled from the home, told his wife, called her on the phone and told her, I'm gonna go buy a gun. I'm gonna come back and kill you and your kids. Um, so he fled to Wyoming. We tracked his cell phone into Wyoming. And then we sat on him and watched him for a couple of days. Two days later, he returned, came down through Denver, Colorado, back into Utah, through Green River, up through Price, and we were able to get a helper city police officer to make a traffic stop on him at the summit of Spanish Fork Canyon, um, where he was taken into custody. Um, he had, uh, he had some, a little bit of narcotics with him at the time. Um, the, the interesting part about this one was he's, when he fled, he then in turn, cause he was angry, he sent pornographic material of him and his wife to their sixteen-year-old daughter. Um, and so that made it an automatic felony charge, which is why we were able to, to hunt him down and work on it. Um, he's booked in the Utah County Jail and then since then, he's already violated the jail release agreement four times by calling his spouse. So he's already violated protective order. Um, so the, the original team spent about, the original patrol team squad that took this case spent about fifteen hours on it. Um, I got a whole, a set the day after it occurred and between myself and, and the major crimes task force, we spent about eighty-four man-hours hunting him and taking him into custody. Um, basically you sit and watch cell phone pings all day to see where they, where he's coming or where he's going. Um, and then, um, victim services were initiated right off the get-go with this case. Um, and they, they've been working with her throughout the entire process and they're very helpful for us because they're able to relay information from the victim that maybe the victim wasn't comfortable telling us. Or maybe it's something that we missed in our investigation and the, the victim brings it out later. Uh, so the case, this case alone, just in manpower, will cost the city about six thousand dollars just to track this guy down.
One thing on that case that Sergeant Jaz was just talking about, the victim in this case didn't leave her home for three days because she was terrified.
I couldn't even get her to come to the PD and make a statement. She, she wouldn't come. She wouldn't leave her home. I had to send investigators and the victim's advocate out to her house to talk to her because she wouldn't go outside. So. Um, this is the list of the, the homicides that we've had since two thousand and fourteen that are just domestic related. We've had more homicides. Some of them are drug-related cases, but these are, these are family-related or intimate partner-related cases. Um, so I think the one that stands out the most to me and, and Chief actually worked on this case is the one in two thousand and fifteen with the boyfriend killed a four-year-old little boy and then waited for mom to come home and then killed mom when she got home. So. These are our statistics from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand, the end of two thousand and twenty-three. As you can see, the spike in domestic cases in two thousand and twenty, when COVID hit, it did spike. It went up a little bit and we kind of figured that was because of everybody being stuck indoors and can't go to work or whatever, you know, and just getting sick of each other. Um, it, it kind of went down a little bit and then it's back up on our way through. We're already in the, just in January alone, we're in the forties um, of two thousand and twenty-four. So we're already, we're already on our way back up. Um, stalking cases is something that we've, we've started to track as well. Um, family problems, uh, protective order violations, harassment charges. Um, the patrolman come out and take those calls and then I go through and follow. So on a, on a standard minor domestic violence case, you know, a husband gets mad and punches the hole in the wall and she calls the police. Um, an officer will spend about four hours on that case gathering evidence, taking the suspect to jail, writing the report. Um, and then that case then comes up to me and I go through it, pick through it with a fine-toothed comb and make sure we're doing everything the right way. Um, and then that sometimes cases can last, you know, take me an hour to go through, twenty minutes to go through. It just depends on the severity of the case. And there's other cases. I'm still working a stalking case that I started in November. Um, that just is a continual drag-won case. Um, and then the ca, the case is, is given to victim's advocates and we offer all our victims services. Um, and it takes them about, they, on average, they're about ten hours in phone calls and visiting and filing for protective orders and stuff on every single case. Um, and just in two thousand and twenty-three, our victim services served five hundred and seventy new domestic violence victims. So as you can see, that doesn't meet the statistic on our graph because a lot of the victims that we help, maybe we're a victim outside the city of Warren. They live here, but the domestic violence occurred in Provo. Or they lived out of state and they just moved here and they want to report the, the domestic violence. And so we take them in and try to help them file for the order and explain it. This is, so last year in July, uh, Utah's changed the statute, um, because of, a, a lot of it came down because of the Gabby Bativo case and down in Moab. Um, but they, they initiated something that we've already been doing for a couple of years here. The lethality assessments where every single officer, they go on a domestic violence case between intimate partners, they have to ask a specific amount of questions. And then that victim's then categorized as either high risk or low risk. Um, every single high-risk one has to be reported to the state. The state wants to know how many high-risk ones we have. And then they also have to be given a, a chance to, to have services, whether that's hotels, uh, food, you know, childcare, whatever we can help them get. We try to help them get, get them on their feet. Um, they also require a stalking, or sorry, a strangulation form now. Um, strangulation cases are the, probably the most severe ones that we deal with. Because if they strangled them, the next time they're probably dead. And so as it rises up through the matrix of violence. Um, so the domestic violence investigation follow-up, uh, not only reviews the cases, make sure they're handled properly, but also serves as a point of contact with a victim. Um, a lot of times these victims need information and the patrolman that may have taken their case may work weekend graveyards and maybe he's not working on it Tuesday morning. And so how do they get access to that information? So that's kind of one of the things I do a lot of. I do a lot of contact with victims and follow-up, making sure they have what they need. So along with the victim's advocates. Um, and then the, the liability involved in these cases is huge. Um, you know, if we, if we respond on these domestic cases and we don't take action and then someone does end up getting killed, then everybody wants to know, why didn't you do something? Families will come back and sue the city and, and officers and stuff. So this is our.
Also where you're often put at the greatest risk, right, as a victim?
As officers, yeah. They're some of the most dangerous cases for officers to go on. This is our, our current victim's advocate team, um, with Hoku. And then these are their statistics. So you can see that they've doubled as well. Um, from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-three. Um, our advocates, we have three of them. They average over a hundred cases a year that they work. Um, comparison to other cities that are our size, they have, Provo, for instance, has seven full-time advocates and one part-time. And so they only average about fifty cases a year, which gives them a little bit more time to focus on each individual victim and make sure that they're getting the care that they need. Um, and this is, this is the, the VOKA grant. So we've been using the VOKA grant for quite a few years now. Um, I know, I know that the city really wants to go with grants and it's a great idea. VOKA has been reduced so immensely. We started about a, about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year is what we were getting initially with it. They just cut us down. In two thousand and twenty-four, we got fifty-six thousand dollars. And so, um, they also increased the amount of care and maintenance to the grant. It's constantly changing and and evolving. Um, I know Renee had to do some stuff all day yesterday because she had to go back and pro-rate some things that were involved in that grant. Um, and it took her a, a full day. So it takes about, Renee's the one that services that grant. It takes her about fifty percent of her time um, to, to maintain that grant, do the quarterly reports, do the audit in the year. Every other year they do a, one year they'll do a desk audit, the next year they do an in-person audit. Um, and then, um, it only provides three thousand dollars of that money goes towards actual supplies or, or hotels or whatever for the victims. Rest of that money goes to, uh, pay our salary, her sho, her salaries. A percentage of Renee's salary and a percentage of one of our other advocates' salary getting out of this grant. Um, and so if you, if you add up all the time and effort that's put into it, she spends about twenty weeks a year um, taking care of, of twenty working weeks, um, sorry, I'm down. Twenty weeks of working time in order to take care of that grant. And so with, if you compare that with what we're spending wages to pay her to take care of that grant, we're basically breaking even just to maintain the grant. So we're not really making any, you know. Um, it's not like CDBGs. We have, we do use CDBG. Uh, we've had a portion of that um, as part of our victim services. Some of victim services comes out of that. It's a very, CDBG is a lot easier to maintain. It's a lot easier to do the quarterly reports. It's a lot less high maintenance. Um, and so the big part for us is we were, we were gonna try to put in a, we wanted to try to put in another advocate, but we, we need another advocate. But if we could reduce the amount of time that Renee's spending servicing, servicing the grant, it gives her more time to become an advocate which, and with adding a domestic violence investigator on top of that would be able to basically drop VOKA and not have to maintain that grant, get an extra advocate out of it. Love that.
Jesus.
Mr. Bean?
Yep.
Uh, I, I appreciate the, the preparation that they've gone into this and, and with Renee. It's, it's a situation where, you know, in, there's, there's crime trends and so forth in, in, in policing and things that come, sometimes come and go. And for me, I would speak to, this is the, this is the number one thing on my concern list right now. This is not showing it. This is, it's proliferating. Um, and the magnitude and the complexity of the cases where our officers do a very good job, but with legislative changes. Um, I mean, really what it boils down to for me to, you know, keep it simple is, is one of the pieces in the domestic violence statute is a mandate that we prevent further violence from occurring. And right now, frankly, we don't have to be able to do that. Um, we're doing the best we can. Sergeant J, the, these, these two folks are also in, they're in charge of our community-oriented policing stuff. So what we're doing right now is we're actually taking officers away from the community outreach program we have to try and deal with the long range, the complexities and so forth that are going with it. And where, you know, the, the grant system that, that helped establish our victim assistance office back in the day, um, and we relied on very heavily, has been more than halved to where frankly, we're half, we're, as we crunch numbers, it's like, is even worth trying to work this grant anymore as it continues to trickle down to where we're essentially at a break-even point right now. Uh, you know, where to, to abandon it or all would actually give us another half of the, of the domestic violence assisting in, in that. Um, one of the things that will be, uh, just as, as a, as a forecast, one of the only things that we really, as far as an expansion of our, of our roster, of our personnel stuff is we believe that we need to have a, a detective in society exclusively and individually to follow up these cases. Not somebody who's supposed to be running our community-oriented policing and trying to chase down guys and everything else that we do. We're, we, uh, we enjoy the fact we're nimble and lean and that's kind of been our, our, our mantra for, for a long time. But this is, uh, this is something, like I said, frankly, my concern is I don't know, um, how we can fulfill that mandate to prevent further violence from occurring. Um, outside of having, uh, being able to really put our, uh, our stamp and our thumb on, on this. And, and it's not our intent to bring in is, uh, you know, the soft white undergully of Family City USA or anything. That, that's not what we're talking about. But these, these are, these are our people too. And this is our community and it's not, uh, I can attest that we've, we've, I mean, I've stood over, uh, dead victims of domestic violence in homes award millions of dollars and in trailers. Um, it doesn't matter where they live. It doesn't matter. All those things that you think would prevent it or make it. It doesn't matter where they live, it doesn't matter, all those things that you think would prevent it or make it less susceptible. I don't, I haven't seen where any of those things, it's, uh, it's pervasive and it's a problem. And as we demonstrate those statistics, I think realistically, in the last ten years, it's more than doubled. The, the number of, of calls. And those are the ones that are, we're able to, we make a criminal case out of, uh, that. Like you said, there's, there's a huge influx of people that come in seeking assistance where it's not necessarily a criminal case. Or it doesn't, you know, the, the threshold of violence isn't, uh, isn't there, but they're definitely abusive, family problems, emotional abuse, uh, financial abuse, all, all those types of things that, that, that office works on. And those are any part of the statistics that will potentially need to be made, so.
Chief, I got your question. Yeah, so with that point five person, if you took the Voca grant away. Is that enough?
As far as, well, I, I mean, the bottom line is you never asked me if I have it up. We're coming up on a budget, alright, we're coming up on a budget, yes.
And so if that's a need, we need to look at it and see if we can fund that.
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, as far as without adding staff. Uh, the funding, the, that, that, the work we have, or if we are to abandon the Voca grant, yeah, there's that piece of, there's those dollars.
Could, could the city look at that Voca grant and, and take that ownership away from them? So they have that money, but, you know, if we need another person or whatever. We, we need to keep our systems safe, right?
Or is there someone that could do the administrative end of that grant?
Well, and that's the problem is we have somebody that's doing the administrative and it's a part-time job. Um, for some, I mean, it's taking one of them do it. And it's just, it's, some of these federal grants that come from the Department of Justice are so, there's absolutely no such thing as free money from them. And the, the, the strings attached, which is basically this, where, you know, back in the late nineties when this was a, hey, let's, let's do this. America thing has been rolled back significantly, administration by administration to where, you know, the.
It's saw there, initially we were getting about three times the amount on the grant.
Yeah, so would, would that be something that, cause we have the grant, you know?
Yeah, so, maybe, maybe Gil, let me give a little bit of context here first. So first of all, we, we have our victims advocate team come in, would return a report, so to speak, about every other year. Uh, so I think the last time was in twenty twenty-one. And, um, as recently as this last year, you as a council approved, uh, a, a women's shelter to come into the city. And I actually got confirmation today that they have in fact, uh, closed on moving forward. Consistent with the, the, I guess, the site plan, based on the, the, the rules last year. So that will be moving forward. Once that comes in, then actually, we actually get access to some, some funds that then help us to be able to support it from a, I would say, to respect. So there is, but that won't actually come in until the building is actually operational. So there is a period of time where we've got this gap. Now, you're getting a little bit of a pre, a pre-budget preview. Um, but yeah, of course, we want to make sure you know that this is, this is important, it is happening, it is real. And that, um, we, we always want you to know that our, our, not only our staff in general, but our police department specifically, is showing that they're doing everything they can already for then to handle it and ask them to improve a certain spread from here.
So, so the ask would be to essentially get rid of the grant and just have to see, fund the fifty-six thousand or whatever?
Yeah, my forecast is, I mean, it could be as soon as next year where we're actually losing money, I'll try to keep a plan.
Yeah, it seems to make just sense that you would get rid of the grant and you would, you'd keep your eyes open for other, or legitimate grants, right?
And that, and that's the first step, I'd say, and then we'll, uh, try to include in our budget process a review of how to, uh, person as well. As far as the grant, so is this the domestic violence investigator?
The investigator, yeah, that's the additional.
That would be a, a position.
So I'll just, I'll throw one quick stat at you guys. So if, if you look at our domestic violence stat, that was three hundred and ninety cases or something for this year, for two thousand twenty-three. I took this position in March of two thousand twenty-three. I came upstairs and started working this position. Since March of two thousand twenty-three, I've reviewed eighteen hundred cases. That's including domestic violence cases, stalking cases, protective order violations, family problems, harassments. The only thing I don't cover on my end is sex crimes. If it's sex crimes, I hand it over to someone else. Um, so all of these, like the chief was saying, you know, a lot of people walk in and they just, they just need advice. How, you know, where do I go? Maybe they're, they've got a problem with a family member or something. That initially starts with the victim's advocates, but then it ends up on my plate. And so it would really be nice to have a full-time investigator that could tend to those needs.
The sheer violence that these cases are coming in is something that I just espued for six years, Chief Adams did it for multiple years. And the amount of violent cases we're getting now is, is exponential.
So, so as far as the why goes, what does the research show, what are people saying? Why? Why is it going up so much domestic violence?
I don't think we'll ever have an answer to that.
I don't know why it ever happens, like, I don't get it, but.
There must, there must be some forces in the society coming out, getting the creative.
There, there are, there's different things, but, but one of the, one of the unfortunate things about this too is it gets politically hijacked all the time. Um, even in our, even in our own legislature and stuff, this, this issue can get hijacked. Become a political issue versus a social problem. Um, and, and that's where we, um, part of what I look at is, you know, maybe, maybe the more warm-centric we are in our versus dependent on the grant funding and things like that, it helps us to try and answer that question ourselves as well. And, and, you know, one of the number one things that, that I believe can make an impact in Warren is being able to continue to use, essentially have our thumb on some of these repeat offender type people that are prone to this type of stuff. And, and that we're actually able to continue to maintain a good relationship with victims. Cause so often they'll come in, they'll get some assistance, they'll go home. And, you know, within the matter of the next weeks and months, uh, oftentimes there's some sort of reunification. I mean, they are family. And, uh, our objective isn't to blow up families, our objective is the family lives together in peace without violence. And, and so it's part of that is that we're able to continue to maintain and monitor that, that those things are being taken care of the right way. That, you know, classes, courses, you know, we got your, we got our eye on you kind of a stuff is, is happening with, with both the victims and the perpetration of violence.
Are our numbers compared to national or trans?
They're pretty close. I mean, we, per, per family capita, one of, one of the, we have a lot of families. So our, our family density is actually more dense than a lot of communities we want to compare ourselves to. Um, so, yeah, I mean, our interpersonal violence and family violence statistics are very closely associated with, with other like-sized communities across the country.
So this seems like a two-pronged thing to me, so you need another investigator to assist. But we also need some additional time for you for community outreach. I mean, we need to get this upstream, we need to help women feel valuable, so they will stand up to men and treat them like that. And we need to teach young boys, you don't do that, you don't hit a woman, you don't treat a woman that way.
And women to men.
Exactly.
I get your point.
Thank you, Chief. I'm, I'm looking at your side, my side soon, but you're, there might be some strength in my side, people, women. But, um, yes, I mean, I, I'd like to explore that too, because I really feel there needs, it needs to be a two-pronged approach. I mean, I was on a jury once for a, a protection order that was, you know, violated. And I saw a man throw up his eight-month-old girlfriend across the room, or eight-month-pregnant girlfriend across the room. And there's just, there's, it's just so, there's so much education and outreach. Oh, I wish we could figure out how to really help on all ends, right? Cause they go back to the men, the women often go to the.
That's our desire to be more proactive and, versus just catching.
Yeah, but you're just playing catch-up all the time, so.
But I think that that's where, I think that's where our victims advocates honestly have the greatest effect. It's not necessarily, um, the initial contact or reach out. They, every victim, when these guys, when these ladies reach out to them, every victim is happy. They're, I mean, they may not want services, but they're, it's nice that someone reached out to them to check on them. Where we find the change is if these guys can have the time to do follow-up care with them. Hey, can we get you into counseling? Hey, can we do this? Hey, can we do that? Then we actually see a change. Then the woman starts to get, the victim, I should say, starts to get on their feet and starts to understand that, hey, I can do this by myself, I don't, I don't need to be abused. And then, but, but really it's those three ladies that have the biggest effect. I, I can try all I want, but it's like, you know, talking till I blow in the face. But it's for some reason, they connect with them and they do a really good job, so.
So do we need more?
Do we need some more?
So if I can emphasize what we're talking about is we're kind of looking ahead, much of terror wave, talking about freeing up time for victims advocates and adding, uh, uh, investigators.
Investigator, okay. And that should do it for a start.
Well, and then, I mean, right, right now, there's been sort of splitting of, of efforts in terms of community outreach. But that, adding those, adding that time will allow us to put more effort into community outreach. So as an example, this last year, our police department teamed up with United Way in our library to get out and, you know, read books and, and, uh, in our schools and in neighborhoods and stuff. And so, um, we, we'll want to continue to expand those things so that we'll get now in our offices, you're seeing as, as humans and to help build those relationships so that then people feel safe to come to us for.
Well, that's also the picnic or the.
Yeah, cookies with cops, don't eat something.
Yes, exactly.
So what do the qualifications of an advocate look like? Is that, is there leash training, is the education, do they need a master's degree and a course?
No, they have victim advocate, they kind of, they do go through a small course that they do with a lot of the son hands for on job learning. Like they don't have a, an academy, we go to a police academy and then we do twelve weeks of FTO. So we're with some of them for twelve weeks, they don't do it the same, but they have a lot of different training that we don't attend, that they go to and.
They're gifted people, I mean, it's, it's, they're, they're empathetic.
I was gonna say, there are a lot of things that we, yeah, they're not, the things that we're not very good at. They, they fill in, that's true, I know you.
Renee, Renee and I has just gotten accredited, uh, by the state of Utah to do, um, court, they're, uh, what do they call them? A, a friend of the court. Um, and so they're actually allowed to sit, they, they've always been allowed to sit in court. But now they can actually speak on behalf of the victim, if the judge was allowed, which is huge for us. Because a lot of those victims don't want to speak out. And so by them getting that accreditation is huge for us, so.
So do we need more advocates as well? Are advocates overworked?
I, I compared our case, I, I compared our advocates to Provo because we are a similar sized city somewhat. Um, and, you know, when you've got three advocates working, we have the, if you compare our domestic violence numbers to Provo, we are neck and neck. And so our, our three advocates are doing the job of what seven and a half advocates are doing in Provo. So there's, there, they are, they are tasked with more work. Um, I don't think they're, I think they're happy with it. Um, but they are, if we could free up Renee, that'd be huge, cause she's, she's the supervisor over them, but she also works cases constantly, so.
Chief, even if it's indirect, is there correlation with like our mental health unit as well? Cause maybe you could speak to the grant we were awarding recently to, uh, to make one of our, uh, mental health, uh, person, you know, part-time or thing.
Yeah, so we have a, a mental health coordinator, that's more along the social work side of things. Uh, it's a non-sport position, uh, her background is in mental health. Um, so we have a, not, not a clinician level, but a social worker level, uh, person that works alongside our, our, uh, mental health unit. Um, and again, the whole point being to, uh, recidivism is what that's all about. It's okay, let's, instead of having the same person having the same mental health crisis all the time. Let's get him, let's get the proper level of care, education, support, et cetera. And that's essentially what we try to do on this side too, on the victim's side, is that they have the proper level of care and support. The stuff to move forward in their life without, you know, in a more, uh, more privacy, more freedom, more ability to be an independent person inside of our community versus continually dealing with us.
They actually, those two positions, I'm over mental health as well. So those two positions actually cross over a lot. Um, we had a, we had a domestic violence last week with a, you know, male that lives with mom and dad, adult male, has mental health issues. And we were able to not only tend to the victims of the domestic, the family. But we brought Cameron in and dealt with the mental health side of that as well, so they do cross over quite a bit.
She's asked for attending all their suicides, the families to hopefully prevent further suicides happening for the families.
We, realistically, in Utah County, I think we're, one, we are the trendsetters in mental health. Com- completely, no other agencies here have that. And no other agencies in Utah County have domestic violence investigators either. Now, they, they do have some up in Salt Lake County, the big agencies, Salt Lake City PD, Unified PD, they do have them. Um, and so we do have kind of a, a roadmap of how to do it and where to take it. And so that's kind of, that's what, you know, that's where we want to head is so that we can offer services to the victims.
But it, and that's kind of where I see you're going is you've got your, your regular, uh, domestic violence advocates. But by adding this investigator, it makes the whole system work more effectively, right?
To our continuity of care.
As it only the other.
Yes, homicide prevention, basically, is what we're trying to do, is have one point of contact for all of those victims. Just contact a person specifically, not have five officers on graveyards on their days off, but they're not getting their calls for help.
Right, so it just makes your whole operation more effective, so you don't necessarily have to have more advocates.
So do we hear anything with the county? Does the county ask for our help along?
Where?
Like, say, like Vineyard, is there?
No, they have their.
Like sheriffs, yeah.
They have their own.
They have their own.
We, the only thing that we assist with, if you will, is we have an MOU with Linden. Uh, because the, the relatively small city that it is. So they actually are actually quite generous in financial support of our victim advocates. But in contrast to what the draw is, if you will, on the service, uh, we have a grateful relationship with them, but that's, you know.
Okay, any other questions?
Alright, appreciate what you guys do.
Thanks, thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Well, we're nine-one-ones, just call us, we'll send you.
Yeah, if you have a strong son, we'll bring you some videos.
Hey, well, thank you. Why don't we go ahead and, uh, so just run for this agenda. Well, we've got some time. Just run for this agenda, then we'll, uh, drop some food out here. So and a review. Uh, number two, city council reports, something to record him today, right? There's nothing on the agenda.
I, no, because we only did it once a month.
We did it.
Okay. And then we'll go to six block, we'll have a call to order, implication and inspirational thought, Dave Schellenberger. And literally those, I'm right in Guyman, who I invited, Jen. So would you like to just walk in and introduce one? And, and we've got, uh, as far as item six point one, uh, we're gonna talk about the Cheesecake Factory. We've been airbags for a long time, so it's a big deal.
I can finally talk about it.
Mayor, if you had a, a little change of plans, uh, the regional manager, Kerry is here right now setting up cheesecake from the Cheesecake Factory, individual slices. And please get one with your meal or one in the fridge. If you leave them out, they might not go back, they might go back, but there's enough for the audience members as well. For sixty-five pieces of bread, so.
You should have, you should have announced that in the city.
Um, you have to be in the building right now. It'll be gone. And we've got item six point two, uh, the people's choice accomplishments, people, they will share it out with us. And then we'll go to item seven, personal occurrences. And we should make sure we clarify, I think, I think that can be a lot of. And we should make sure we clarify, I think, I think that can be a lot of interest in uh, in the project that, that we're proposing. And so I, yeah, we just wanna make sure that we get everyone over to public hearing, right, that we both agree. In as far as personal appearances, yeah, we want the personal appearances to be not, people aren't interested in them, in the uh force. Okay?
Patience.
Um. We've got, let's see. Uh, consent items, approval of eight minutes and a reappointment uh to the Transportation Advisory Commission. This will be Russ for off, Becky Buxton. Then we go to nine, nine point one, uh, we're, we're gonna have this ordinance uh. Modifying the common boundary between the city of Orem and Provo City, located in the intersection of ten thirty east, sixteen thirty south. Uh, and there's three of these, um. At nine point two, which is an ordinance uh by Orem City, modifying its common boundary at two thousand south and Columbia Lane. And nine point three, uh, an ordinance modifying common boundary between the city of Orem and Provo City. At seven hundred north, fifteen fifty east, and for the new council members, this is not something that hardly ever happens, is modifying boundaries between cities. But we decided to essentially, we had a reason to do it, and so we went ahead and did three different locations all at once to just make it nice and clean.
Clean up the map.
Right.
So Mayor, can I just jump in on uh?
Yeah.
Nine point three, we do have uh basically a boundary adjustment agreement. I think we've talked to you a little bit about some of the things that we wanted to include as part of that. Um, you know, as you probably know, there's a bridge just a little bit north of that property that crosses the Provo River. And so we were asking them as part of this to improve their portion of the bridge that lies on their property. I mean, that may be, and we, and we've timed it to development of it, uh, an additional piece of their property. And so it may be five or six or seven years down the road, but ultimately, we want that bridge to be approved. And then they will dedicate that to the, the public for the public use as well as basically, they'll dedicate uh. Public street that goes from the bridge to fifteen fifty east, so that there can be public access. From fifteen fifty east going across the bridge and then ultimately hopefully connecting to university happening, so. Yeah.
Right, and so we essentially, are there any other issues, Steve? And we talked that we're doing this, uh, anything that we needed on our side? We were kind of give and take with Provo on this, or is there any other issues with Provo?
There were, there were no other issues on the other boundary adjustments. Uh, they were, you know, pretty straightforward, just kind of cleaning up, um. They're, they were more cleanup items, right, so this one involved a little bit larger parcel, wouldn't necessarily probably clean up as much as. Just makes more sense for it to be in Provo eventually.
Okay, that's why Provo's the way that they'll with the brand.
Which, well.
That's why the owner is.
Sorry. The.
The bridge. Own bridge.
Well, I, I, I don't know to what extent it's been used so far. It's not public right now. So, but maybe people have used it, you know. But it's not necessarily, yeah, right, and so they may not be objecting, people are using it, but I don't think it's actually.
So that's a nice.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we've got item nine point four, the public hearing amendment uh to street connection, that's the plan, they're only made the street connection between fourteen thirty south and four hundred west. And a lot of you have heard things about that. That's where I think uh some people will be coming to talk about that. Um, and as far as that's nine point four, as far as this process goes, just having a public hearing, or will you be voting on that tonight too?
Yeah, you potentially vote on that if you feel like you're at a point where you can vote on it. You're ready to make a decision.
So we would, we would either vote on it or we would.
Continue it until. You needed more time, yeah.
Then we've got item number ten, communication items, item eleven, city manager information items, brand. And then we'll adjourn after that. So, any questions? Seriously?
One.
Yes. Okay, so it's Chrissy's birthday, I heard. And so we're gonna have pie, Ken?
Chris's birthday turns twenty-nine on Sunday.
Congratulations.
Well, that makes me. So.
Twenty-nine, how many times?
Um, thanks for watching. So as far as the cookies, we'll come back over here, we don't, we, what are we doing?
Take them.
So the cookies will just be part of the meal, type of. Okay, so the cookie looks part of the meal. Everyone wish Chris happy birthday.
Thank you.
We say cookies.
No. Jen, start it up.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Curtis. So happy birthday to you.
Thank you. There you go. You're blessed to love each other.
All right, so we'll, we'll have a prayer to bless the food, um, and then. I guess we'll, should we just officially adjourn now and then we'll, we're done with everything, yeah. Okay, so we'll officially adjourn now, but then we'll have a prayer and have the food. We have a volunteer for the prayer. Come on, Chris?
Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we've had to meet and to discuss these important items concerning the city and the citizens that reside here. Father, we're thankful for our many blessings and this part of the union. Thankful for the food we'll partake of and ask you to bless it and provide energy to us as we continue on through our meetings. May we find and feel of thy spirit in helping us accomplish the purposes of our city and of all those who reside here. Thankful again for those who serve and lead and left and blessed as employees and those who volunteer and elected officials. We ask thy care upon us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Jason Bench Show.
Test, test, test.
He's married.
Okay, cool.
What do you guys think?
I know.
I'm happy to do that.
It's so fun.
Oh.
It's like, it's like.
So, um, now, basically.
I just.
Oh.
So, um.
Now, basically.
And I just. I just. I understand.
Yeah.
I'm talking. Yeah. Well.
I can't. Our. With the stock, she had to get. Strong version.
So, I'm thinking.
We're doing that.
Right.
He, I lied. So, today, they're gonna try it in there. And we've got so many. That they thought. Why is it sort of. Sure.
Oh, nice.
So, I guess I didn't like. So, he's got one of them. You know. It's dropped it. He's got one and he's gonna try it there. I'll run this. And then, of course, we have the. So, what name? Hammond. In today. But. There's some shots.
Oh, really?
He put on some batteries. Like, I haven't checked it off. No, it's not different. But I'm saying that I can't. Come around. For recent. So, I can't be charged. I was like, why didn't bring that? I know.
Yeah.
So, we'll see. I told Carson. Carson, he says he has a problem with. You're about probably. Runs out. Often. Like, have them. What, see, they like.
I think that's a good tactic.
About that. You gotta be. No, it's like.
I'm sorry about that.
I'm lucky to see. This is. He's not here, no. Last. So, they know we're just. For a fight. I don't like the bandages. Yes. I mean.
One night.
Since we've. If you want.
Clear. Well, I told you. I don't need mine. Yes, because he's. Absolutely. But then, or. Use my cell. So, if they're. It's not. So, I take one way.
Okay, I might stop. Funny you.
It's pretty tough.
Yes.
Down the road. I'm up here sleeping. I'll put you down. Marking the city. I do. I got two back. All right, here we go. One, two, two.
They were trying to hear.
Your, your date fell for. People. People. Both. Because of the. So, I'm with my. Yes. That first. I mean, what things? That's not really.
I'm not. No. What?
So, just this. This. Those like. I don't know. They're long. Oh, yeah. What? My. Right on. It's sort of. So, that was called Los Angeles. Oh, yeah. Really? That's what I told him, like, sooner. Really? She was. Getting up there. Certain place again. Yeah. Yeah, seriously. You know, some people. That's fine. I was thinking. I had to get the.
Yes, so maybe.
Yeah. That also. Either. Something. Really? I believe it's. I'm. Just. Was. Were you requesting? Oh, it probably. Probably. From planning committee? Well, yeah. Well, he has his time.
This one is.
Okay. Cause I agree. My. Lots of. Yeah. Awesome. Yeah. You can be. Go with your. So, you. I was. I was gonna say. Could you talk? We like. How do you know the? Yeah. You have. Time. James. Good day for coming. Well, I'm. It's all you could say. I think it's over you.
I think it's so much.
Jason Bench Show.
I did learn something new. Apparently, these are Dallas Cowboys. Are you scared? Usually. Sure. I have so. I believe there's. Something wrong. Running. Finally. Also, I got. Here. That's great. Anybody.
If I stream the BYU game like this, do you think anyone knows?
So, too. Art.
Well, awesome, Greg. Have you seen it?
Well, he is too. I'm.
I, I, I'm. Not a. Not a. Yeah. Fine.
Yeah. Right. I agree. Cause I used to follow Eagles when Andy Reid was there. Then I kind of.
Did. This weekend. Oh.
Well, Lamar Jackson is. Test, test, test. Test. Is that working? I think they do. Don't ever bet against Andy Reid. That's my. Helsley just got one milk last week. Test, test. Is that, is that working? Can you hear me through the mic? Is it working? Now, you gotta work out a few more times, too. Maybe I gave my ticket to my nephew. I was like, oh, this is horrible. My son's going with my nephew. What do you do, though? Like, really? When I bought him, I'm like. Big 12s, I mean, Tuesday nights. What are the odds? I didn't even think about it. Cause we got another one. I think the Central Florida. Or the, yeah, Central Florida home games on this council might too. In February. Yeah, I know. I do too. I just asked for Jason if I streamed it on my phone right here. They have been.
There was. Cause we never.
Well. Like, it's. But I. You feel like I'm in my own little island.
Okay, that's why I said that.
Why is somebody?
I can extend the audio. For here. Watch the screen. I mean, look.
You're not. You're not certain. You're. The screen. So, yes.
How do I? What do I do?
All you did. It was just. It's on. Oh, you have to do stuff. Yeah. Yeah, if you don't want it on, you can leave. The green line is all that's.
So, you should.
You should be. You all.
For six months. Yeah. Like, you know. Tom's gonna give it. He says he has one.
We don't make council meetings this fun every time.
Oh, man.
Okay, let's just get every new. Everything.
I. I. This is my fear. Yeah, I just need to. If I ever use it. Yeah.
Nice, too. This is. But Cheesecake Factory has one bad thing. It's the one place my oldest son has thrown up twice because he eats so fast. It's so good. He just like shovels it down. He's had so much good stuff.
Well, when we went to the. We got there. Quite come to. We know they.
Totally.
This is a big.
That is what you don't. How bad is that small world?
It's hard. It looks just. And. I wouldn't know. What's your. They're.
They sent you three.
Like, yeah. First time.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. That's. Yeah, we should have less.
Yes. It's test, right?
Yeah. Yep.
I'd like to welcome everyone and call this meeting to order. Tonight, we'll have our invocation and inspirational thought by Dave Schellenberger and our pledge of allegiance by Conrad Gaiman. And Jen has asked them to come. So if you'd like to introduce them.
Yes, thank you, Dave and Conrad for coming. Dave and Conrad are both business owners here in Orem. And they're both highly involved in the community with both Boy Scouts and with the bike team in Orem. They've rendered thousands and thousands of hours of community service. So welcome to them and thanks for being willing to do this with us.
Thank you. So if we can start out with. Dave Schellenberger with the prayer and then Conrad with the pledge.
Our dear healthy father, we're grateful that we can gather here this evening. We're grateful for our civic leaders and we ask that they may be guided tonight and in general with clarity and wisdom as they make decisions for our city. And we're grateful for our citizens that are also here. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. And then we'll have the pledge. Would the audience please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item six point one. And Kathy Lewis would like to tell us about this.
Good evening, council members. Today marks a really exciting occasion as we extend an enthusiastic welcome to a long sought after addition to our city, the Cheesecake Factory at University Place here in Orem. This achievement has been a long journey spanning over a decade. Can you believe that? In 2014, our Economic Development Division turned to the power of social media and asked our residents to share their wish lists for businesses that they wanted to see come to Orem. The response was resounding and one name echoed louder than the rest, the Cheesecake Factory. The residents' voices were heard and it sparked the beginning of a tenacious pursuit. Now, fast forward to 2017, when the city conducted a citywide survey seeking the residents' preferences for new businesses. The overwhelming consensus? You guessed it, the Cheesecake Factory claimed the top spot. Then hundreds of residents reached out to the Cheesecake Factory and extended invitations, making it clear that Orem was ready for a cheesecake slice of heaven. In 2018, KUTV played an unforgettable April Fool's Day prank, announcing that the Cheesecake Factory was finally coming to Orem. Well, the prank worked its magic because deep down, we all longed for it to be true. Little did we know that our collective wish was steadily becoming a reality. As we ushered in 2020 with hope and aspirations, the city once again turned to social media, this time on New Year's Day, to poll residents on what the city should have achieved by the year 2020. The resounding answer was, you probably guessed it again, to bring a cheesecake factory to the city of Orem. Now, to the Cheesecake Factory, we extend a warm welcome from the entire city of Orem and its residents. Your presence adds a sweet touch to the vibrant group of businesses in Orem, and we look forward to savoring the delicious offerings that the Cheesecake Factory has to bring to the University Place. Here's to the exciting journey ahead, filled with cheesecake smiles, community celebrations, and a flourishing partnership between the city of Orem and the Cheesecake Factory. Now, before we hear a few words from Kerry Kaya, the area director of operations for the Cheesecake Factory and possibly Patrick Clowers, the general manager of the City Creek Cheesecake Factory. First, I'd like to present Kerry with a gift of appreciation. It's a bag filled with Orem logoed items that will carry the spirit of our community with him and just help to give a warm welcome to the Cheesecake Factory.
Oh, thank you. Yes, well, thank you.
So now we'll give Kerry a moment to share a few words.
Thank you, Kathy. One of the things that is determined for when we open one of our restaurants is we design a pin. And they're favorites with a lot of our staff and they trade them online. And you're going to give me a lot of ideas on what I should present to our group of leaders when it comes to presenting a pin. So thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, city of Orem. It is an absolute pleasure to be sitting here with you all today. Next to me is my colleague, Patrick Clowers, as mentioned. And I also have with us Elena Sillsby, sitting behind me. She's the general manager of the Cheesecake Factory, Murray. And also Jordan, sitting next to her, who is a staff member with Patrick at City Creek. She's also Elena's daughter. We really are a family inside of a family with the Cheesecake Factory. We're here today because of the incredible partnership and amazing fortitude with Rob and the Woodbury Corporation to get the Cheesecake Factory to here in Orem. And I hope you're ready for a lot of cheesecake. We did bring some with us, as some of you have already noticed. And for the ladies and gentlemen joining us, there is some treats for you in the back later if you weren't able to get one on your way in. One of those flavors, we bought some of our favorites, is the Cookie Dough Lover's Cheesecake with pecans if you're a nut allergist. What's special about this cheesecake is for every slice we sell, we donate 25 cents to Feeding America and all of its network of food banks, including the Utah Food Bank right here locally. We opened our first cheesecake factory back in 2007, and since then, we donated over $6 million to feeding hungry Americans in local communities. It's something I'm proud of, Patrick, and all of our teams are very proud of. Our restaurants are, yes, they're great places to take your family to eat. We have a 23-page menu, so start now. We have over 30 different cheesecake flavors to choose from. We like to say we have something for everyone, but we're also a great employer. But I think the thing that we're most proud of is we're a great business partner as well as a community member. We have a lot of outreach with harvest programs and community things that we like to do. So thank you for allowing us to be here. We're super excited. We plan on opening our doors fall, and we look to employ over 200 local staff from the Orem community. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're all very excited about this. I, I heard about this before I ran for mayor, that it was coming. It was coming. It's like this program that's always been coming, but you're here and we're very excited about it. I don't think we've had anyone bring treats for us in the back of the room before. So that's a first as long as I've been here. And, and those are for the audience and everyone who is lucky enough to come tonight. And so if any of you are upset, this will hopefully sweeten you right up.
It's a good way to start. Can I also add? Part of our opening is we do practice services or mock services. I'll give that information to Kathy so she can give it to the community represented here this evening. Come down and join us. And we're going to be practicing. So if you're, if you can allow us to make a couple of mistakes here and there as we iron out and get ready for the public, we'd love to have you.
That'd be awesome. And, and I just want, I was just thinking as you were talking too. I mean, if you were going to make a movie, it'd be Family City USA and the Cheesecake Factory, right? So it doesn't get much better than that. But we, we appreciate everything that you're going to do and we're all excited about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next, item six point two. More good news from our communications director, Pete Wolfley.
All right. Thank you, council and mayor, for having me today. You've seen some of this information before, but it's, what we titled it is the 2023 People's Choice Review or People's Choice Social Media Review. And it's basically just a look back at 2023, how things went on social media, and then a look forward on where we're going in 2024. So to share just some quick stats from this last year, on Facebook, we reached almost a million people or our stuff was served up a million, almost a million times. And that's 180% increase from where we were this time last year. So compared to 2022, we've had huge, huge gains. And you can see our, our interactions are up 17%. Our overall followers and audience is bigger by 22%. And so it was just a great year on Facebook. This is the Instagram stats. We were up 128% compared to last year, 100% more interactions. So this is people liking, hearting, commenting, laughing, hugging, sharing, doing any type of interaction with us. And so all these numbers are up and there's been huge, huge increases. And I, I spent some time thinking about why this is, and I came up with three reasons. And the first one is the Bybee Law of Positivity. So one of Bren's mantras in life is to look at the positive and stay as positive as you possibly can in every situation. And that has paid huge dividends for us on social media. As you all know, social media can be just a cesspool of, you know, toxic behavior. But, you know, this year, we really, really strive to, you know, kind of stay above that and be positive and celebrate the wins and all the good things that are happening in Orem. And you can see it in the results. It, it really paid off.
Mayor and council, if I can interject, I, I was told it would be cheesy, too cheesy to have Cheesecake Factory come in and welcome them. But I don't care. We're going to do it. And it turned out to be really positive.
That's right. Bring, bring on the cheese. That's the second law of the Bybee family. Bring on the cheese. The second thing I was thinking about is great content. And this is a lot has to do with you as the mayor and council, the initiatives that you support, the things you want to do in this community are, you know, resonating with our, our public, our residents. All the gribbing cuttings that we've had, all the new businesses, the new parks, the new amenities, like just all the great stuff that's happened. People just are flocking to it and it's, it's been really fun this past year. And then the third, I've got to give credit to my team. This is, they're some of the most creative people I've ever worked with. This is Melanie, Alicia and Dorelli. They're, they're students in communications and marketing, and they've really helped make a huge difference. The amount of stuff we're able to do, the creativity that we're able to bring to everything that the city does now on social media is at least triple what it used to be. So I really appreciate working with them. They're great. And then this, you saw at the council retreat, these are just the top 25 posts that we had over the year. And you, you've had that in a handout, but here it is again, just for the public. These were all the things that people liked the best from 2023. I put the Orem Express in here. That showed up several times on the top 25. That was a huge hit. Of course, all the small businesses that have come in and the businesses that we've highlighted. Service in the community is a huge thing. And then, of course, all of the lights on stuff, all the Christmas lights and everything surrounding that was huge hits this year. Thousands and thousands of views on that. This is just a summary of the things that people seem to like the most in 2023. I tried to just summarize it the best I could. But these are the kind of things that have worked and we'll continue to do this kind of thing going forward. But as far as specifics in 2024, our goals are kind of continue to expand the reach. So, you know, we, we reached almost a million users. We just want to keep pushing that and, you know, getting it further out there so we can reach more and more of our residents and beyond and attract businesses and people to move to Orem. As we talked about in the retreat, you know, we're going to really buckle down and strive hard to work with our Hispanic community outreach. Dorelli, who you saw, is, she's Spanish speaker. Her parents are Hispanic business owners here in the community. And so we're, we're hoping that she can help us kind of make inroads with, with that community, which they're super important to our community. And then we have several new series that we're excited about. So we're going to do the Faces of Orem, which is just, if you've seen the people of New York, it's kind of that way, where you just meet random people from Orem and learn about them and what makes them unique. The Wisdom of Orem is one I'm really looking forward to. This is, we're going to go over to the senior center and interview the people that are there and, you know, just ask them for their wisdom. You know, we have a huge treasure trove of knowledge and wisdom and experience over there, and we want to get that out to the public. We're going to do lots of Orem trivia. This is another thing I'm super excited about is the Art Ambassador Program. This comes from our Arts Council. They're going to be helping promote all of the great artistic nonprofits we have. You know, we have great choirs and dance groups and artistic groups and the CERA. So we're going to work with all those groups to kind of put that out more to the citizens. We have this behind the scenes day in the life series where you'll get to kind of ride along with a city employee and see what, you know, what it is that makes up their job and what they do to build a better Orem. For February, we're doing date nights in Orem. So if you're running out of ideas for Valentine's Day or anything like that, you'll have at least four good options. Then we're going to do care highlights. We have this amazing care program that was renewed for another 10 years, and we want to highlight everything that the care program does because it's incredible. Not every community has it. And then we're going to do a lot of historic stuff too this year. Because Orem does have a great history that's kind of unknown. And so we want to get, do our best to kind of let people know that they live in an amazing place with interesting history, and there's some really fun stuff ahead. So do you have any questions or suggestions? We're totally open to anything you want to do to, on this front.
I just want to say thank you. You've done an amazing job and I'm excited to see what you're doing for 2024. I, I think those are some, some marvelous ideas. And, you know, one of my, one of my favorites has been watching the new business highlights on Saturdays to see those pop up and, and to see these, these businesses in Orem that we may or may not have ever heard of has been so much fun and such a great way to highlight those businesses. And I'm, I'm excited. I thank you for the marvelous job that you're doing.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
It's fun seeing the, your team around town and doing their thing and, and they're just so creative. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say as far as Pete, because I work with Pete a lot. So to really understand the context of what, what's happening, I mean, how long do you work in the city, Pete?
Uh, I'm, I'm about to start my ninth year.
He's about to start his ninth year. So, but if you go back to a year ago, when you were put in place as the communications director and, and basically over all the city communications, that's from a year ago to now is when we've had an amazing transformation in our numbers on Facebook, our numbers on Instagram, and then with the interns, just being able to, to take the message of Orem so much further. So I just want to congratulate you and, and we had some major conversations about a year ago. And you've executed on them perfectly. So I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Yeah, shout out to my team too. Like couldn't have done it without them.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Okay, next up, we've got personal appearances. And. You're supposed to say kind things is the short version of this, but I know Carol Walker and she'll only say kind things. So would you please come up, Carol, and say whatever you'd like?
As long as it's nice. First of all, I just want to thank you. I know being a city councilman, running for office is really tough, and I appreciate all your willingness to serve because we live in a great city and all of you help make that a better city. All the new things are happening. But specifically, I want to thank you for the fabulous Christmas lights. We have enjoyed those so much and I just publicly want to say how much everyone I've talked to and everyone I see is just love the lights. So I know it takes a lot of being involved with the creation of putting them in place and getting people to do it. I know it costs a lot of money and a lot of time, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. All right. Moving on to item number eight. We've got our consent items. For consent items, we got item eight point one, approval of the meeting minutes for January 9th, 2024, and item number eight point two, the reappointment of two individuals to the Transportation Advisory Commission, Russ Verhop and Becky Buxton. Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent items listed.
My second.
Aye.
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 The consent items pass or they're approved. Okay, we'll go to item nine, scheduled items. And item nine point one, we have an ordinance by the Orem City Council modifying a common boundary between the city of Orem and Provo City located near the intersection of 1030 East and 1630 South. And Jason, Jason Bench will present that.
Thank you, mayor. Tonight, we have three boundary line discussions with Provo City. Over the years, we've been looking at several different issues that we've had and Provo and Orem has finally got together and at least got two of them, and hopefully we can get those resolved and then the third one we'll discuss as well. This one is, as you head down into Provo on University Parkway, Carterville Road, you can see going over the parkway right there. Years ago, this was, if you can see through my pointer really quick. Years ago, this was, if you can, turn my pointer really quick. Orem City has a lift station, or wellhouse, sorry, well, right here. Years ago, when it was built, the boundary was modified to keep that in Orem. But for some reason, the kind of the crazy line right there continued until now we've kind of come to consensus with Orem and Provo. The county already taxes those properties that will be in Orem or Provo, they already tax them in Orem or Provo, so it's already been resolved years ago. The boundary, for some reason, just has not been changed. And so tonight, we are here in connection with Provo, agreeing on the common boundary that you can see there, and so we're just making a recommendation that the council approve this modification to make the boundary a little more consistent in this area. Any questions that I can address?
Yeah, just to clarify for the audience watching this, this is something that happens very rarely to modify boundaries between cities, but we've just gone through a process where we're looking to clean up some things that just didn't make any sense and have just kind of been there forever. And so that's what these first two are about. Any questions? And we have discussed these pretty exhaustively in, in our prior meetings. Oh, wait a sec. Yeah, it's not really a public comment.
It is a public hearing, Mayor.
Okay. All right, if you'd like to say something. Yeah, we'll, we'll just open this as a public hearing for anyone that would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Paul Riddle, I'm the local property owner in the area, and I've spoken with most of the neighbors around, and we support the concept and the idea with the understanding that there'd be no intent and further. We'd like to make public record that, you know, our request is that this never be allowed to have a, a new road there or access to the development of Provo, making sure that we keep the dead end road there a dead end road, and that we don't incur any additional traffic in through the area. It's never been part of a design, but it's always a concern for, for us as the local residents, so we appreciate your consideration in, in allowing that and entering this information into the public record. We also, while we're at it here, like the idea of the rural Carterville Road feel, and additionally, most of the, every neighbor that I've spoken to in the area in what we call South Carterville, Orem SOBs, that's south of Berkshires. So just a little limited, little limited area there that, that, for a few hundred yards where, where even though when you paved last year, you stopped right at the Berkshire entrance and didn't continue to the bridge there where Provo is, if you can imagine that picture, understand that that's happened more than once, and we've watched it and chuckled. Those of us who are south of Berkshires would like to thank the, the, the city services area for patching the potholes that are there, even though it didn't get asphalted, the potholes are there regularly, and they've been patched, but they're back again, and they come quickly. So we appreciate you looking for us. And one more item, would like to consider that, I brought it before here, years and years ago, and that is, we'd like to see one more speed bump go in there at that intersection here of ten thirty south and Carterville, where the last speed bump is a long ways away, and it seems like everybody wants to hit the bridge there going about fifty or sixty miles an hour, and our little area in Carterville wants to continue a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit there for the safety of our residents. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Jason, could you address those?
Could you pull the picture up? Yeah, pull the picture up again.
Yeah, so there is no access into the Provo development, nor is there any plans that I'm aware of to have any direct access into that.
And do you know where we paved? We stopped paving?
I don't, well, I don't have it on the map here, Berkshires would be further north.
Where did they stop?
Don't know.
Where'd he?
We, we could have Chris Shirkie probably address that, or look into it for us and get back to him.
Okay.
Okay. But Jason, as far as what we're talking about, what their concern was, is that we tap into, I mean, you basically would have to be tapping into University Parkway, right? I mean, that's the only...
I think what you're referring to is going into the Provo development, where the new development is going, the LDS, or yeah, LDS Studios and things like that, there's, right now, there's no access into that shopping development, and I don't think there's any intent to have that connection.
Is there any way to, to guarantee that?
Like, can never say never, but right now, there's no, there's no plans to connect that into that, as far as the city is concerned.
Mayor, if I could add to that, when the Rivers Edge development was being planned, there were some discussions between Provo and our engineering on making a connection, and we told them we were not interested in having that connect into Orem. So our stance as staff has been, that's not going to happen.
Okay, I guess the only concern is, five years from now, ten years from now, different people have different conversations, is there any way, thing we can do to make sure that doesn't happen?
I mean, really, what you can do is state your current intent at this council, but you can't bind what future councils might decide to do, so, you know, the best you can do is say it's not our current intent, or, you know, ever, right now, as far as you're concerned, to ever connect that, so.
Okay, and I think, I mean, I think that is our intent, it's always to go to protect the neighborhoods, right?
Yeah, and, and like Ryan has said, I don't know that there's, why staff would ever, or the city council would ever want to do that, but, I mean, you just never know in the future, so.
Right. Okay.
I think that's very accurately stated. Just as a follow-up, I attended the Provo City Council when they were approving the development for this new development, that, again, it's in Provo City, and we're looking at it on the map, and the map's not three-dimensional, but, you know, they approved four-story apartments there right next to the boundary, and the climbing wall is three stories and looked right down on some of the houses there, so, you know, what's happened has happened there. But additionally, part of, part of the record that, why, why I went to Provo City when they were approving the development was, when they pushed, put out their little index card, they adopted a Google Maps, and Google Maps shows, and, and I know it's not, it's not official public record, but people would think so if they looked at it. And, and when Provo City did that, the road ten thirty south, or sixteen thirty south, they showed as an open road. In fact, it's not, it's a dead end, and there's a, there's no gate there. Well, there is a gate where, where Brigham Young University has some private property there and the Motion Picture Studio, but when Provo put that out for public comment, all of that private road, and, and the reason I was there is because I'm a Jason property holder with BYU, and together we identified that and saw that as a need, to make sure and understand, make sure that's part of the public record that that road is a private road from Brigham Young University. There is a gate with allowing access to Orem, it's been closed off, it's been closed for, for twenty years or more that I know of. Also, there's a gate on the other end where you enter from Provo, where their official entrance is, where there's a guard gate to the Motion Picture Studio. And my, my point in all this is, is only, just, we're sure, we think everybody agrees in this concept, but other than, let's be aware and know that, that Provo City was made aware of this as well, when they approved the development, when they advertised for the development, they showed that road as a public road, and that could have been a real problem. So we made the point there, and we're making the point today, just as an assurance and follow-up for us. Thank you.
Regarding the other point, as far as a speed bump in that particular spot, would that be a, an additional conversation at later time, or where do we go with that?
Yeah, probably Sam Kelly or Chris Shirkie can look into that, as part of the Transportation Committee.
Okay. And that, and that may require some petitions from the citizens in that location.
Most likely, that would be the case. You have a start.
But, so if you could, if you could reach out to us, if you, if that's a path that you want to go down to, the gentleman that just spoke, Paul, if that's a path you'd like to go down, then come back to the city, and we, I'm sure we could look at that.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Any other public hearing? All right, well, let's close the public hearing, and let's go ahead and, and make a motion, but I would encourage whoever makes a motion, Steve, you can talk to this. As far as, there's my voice, but as, as far as the idea that we want this road to stay closed, and that's our, our absolute intent, if we could have some wording to that in this resolution?
Yeah, you could, you could state that that's the council's desire and intent in the motion, but, you know, it's not, like I said, it's not gonna be binding on a future council potential.
Right, but it would give them a place to go back to.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I'd propose that whoever makes a motion says that, unless there's anyone in the council who's against that.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, the City Council by ordinance, by the Orem City Council modifying a common boundary between the city of Orem and Provo, located near the intersection of ten thirty east, sixteen thirty south, and that that road stays closed and that no, no connectivity to Provo. Is that good enough? That's our, our desire.
I second that. Okay, Jen?
Aye.
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 The ordinance passes. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item nine point two.
Okay, this one is the Two Thousand South Columbia Lane intersection, there's a portion of property, let me turn it, this portion here that's currently used as part of the detention system for Orem, it's currently located within the city limits of Provo. What Provo has agreed to do is, you can see the boundary of the street, Two Thousand South, actually, half is in Provo, half is in Orem. Provo City residential developments are along this street, there's no access currently on Two Thousand South into, from Provo into Orem. So Orem, or Provo has agreed to just move the common boundary to that property line, take in the detention basin, and so it'll just be a boundary switch or shift south, no residential properties are coming in, it's simply street and the detention area that you see here. So I'd be glad to address any questions.
We have any questions? We can open this to a public hearing? There's no comments from the public, we'll close the public hearing. And would somebody like to call for a vote? I'll just make a motion.
If you want. I move that by ordinance, the Orem City Council modify a common boundary between the city of Orem and Provo City located near the intersection of Two Thousand South and Columbia Lane.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Aye.
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 The ordinance passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our third ordinance. Jason?
The third and final boundary adjustment here. So this is a River District, came before the council several months ago, when the PD, a PD was created in Orem for a development there. They're coming back and requesting that that portion of the property be taken into Provo. So you can see the, the pink line is the proportion of this development that they want to put into Provo. The blue line is the current common boundary. You can see the red line on the, in the picture, that's the current boundary. What they're proposing, this, this map shows the, the development that was approved in Orem, they simply want to take that boundary and take it into Provo, so that, and basically their, the reasoning behind that is that this is their development in Provo, and so this is all going to be part of that ownership agreement, development, and so what they want to do is provide all the services and zip code and all that into, school district, all that into one location, rather than having two different jurisdictions for fire calls or police calls, things like that. And then all the sewer water and all that will gravity feed into Provo. So that is their request. As part of this agreement, because this is actual property that's, other than the other two, or just simply boundary adjustments, this has actually taken property that is in Orem and into Provo, and so there, there has been a development agreement. Mr. Earl talked about it briefly in the, the brief meeting, there's a couple, there's three different agreements that they, that's in the agreement, the terms, one is that the bridge will be improved, once Phase Three is, and I'll show you a map here briefly when, where Phase Three is. Once that comes in before a certificate of occupancy is granted to any of those buildings, that that bridge, their half that they own, will be improved, and also that would grant a public utility easement on behalf of the city, so that the property owner to the east side of the river can develop and actually have sewer and water and other things, services come across and feed into Orem. They are in Orem, but the services would be across the river. And then the future dedication, that street then would, and part of the bridge, their half would be dedicated, so that it would be a future connection from fifteen fifty over to University Avenue. So this is the map that they're proposing, so this is the portion right now that is under recommendation to go into Provo, the blue is all of their development, the green is their, what they're calling Phase Two, and then the yellow is Three B, so that's what's the development agreement is tied to. Any permit before it's finalized in the area Three B next to eight hundred north would be required that those improvements, the PUE, bridge improvements, and possible dedication would be completed at that time based on the agreement. Anything to add on that, Steve?
Yeah, if I could, just to point out, where, in that area that you see is Phase Two Hospitality, that shows a little street there that connects to the bridge, that's the area that would be, the street that would be dedicated at some point in the future, so that potentially, also when the property to the east of the river gets developed, we can get that, that portion of the street dedicated also, and then hopefully have that public access from fifteen fifty east where that red dot is, out to University Avenue there. So, and, and like Jason said, those public utilities would, would likely go in that same area. So as Jason kind of, you know, indicated, we feel like with these provisions in this agreement, that, that mitigates any negative aspect of this boundary adjustment and, and allows staff, and we do recommend approval of, of this boundary adjustment based on those provisions in the agreement.
Do you have anything else?
No, I don't. Any questions, I'd be glad to address.
Okay, do we have any questions? And, and this is, the first two we talked about were pretty unobtrusive types of adjustments, this is a little bit more significant. So, any questions?
Oh, Mayor, sorry, I just thought of one other thing, if I can go back to that map.
Yeah.
And just to point out that, that Phase Three A, the Restaurant Village, the yellow, so that's, that's the area of development that is tied to the obligations to dedicate the street and improve the bridge, so they, they would have to complete those improvements before they got any certificate of occupancy for any building in that Phase Three A. So that might be several years down the road, because I think their plan is obviously to build Phase One first, and then Phase Two, and then, and then lastly, Phase Three A, so.
Jason, will you just show on here where Phase One will, where the traffic will go for that?
Yes, so you can see, follow the red curve, this is the main access that will tie into the Provo river bottoms, and they will have access out to Eighth North as well. So this, at this point is a public street, this point is a public access, so it's not a public street, but it does allow permanent access through their development, through this, and it ties down into Center Street, ties into fifteen fifty, I believe, or fifty-two hundred, I believe, that has a light on University Avenue, so those are the access points for this development. Eventually, I believe Provo will be working on a bridge here, that this will be connected, but that's, I don't know if that actually has access there, but eventually, there will be some other interconnectivity.
And Jason, can you go back to, because Phase One is a mix between Orem and Provo, can you just go back to the slide that would show the parcel land that we're talking about moving to Provo?
So, yeah, this portion here, it's outlined in red is what's going to Provo.
Okay, so it's, so just to be clear with everyone, it's just those, those groups of buildings right at the very front of the project?
Correct.
So it's, it's not that whole giant part.
So this, what's referred to as Phase Two is all in Orem. The bridge itself is also located fully in Orem, so it'd be under the control of Orem as well.
And, and this, and, and just to clarify for everyone, because we've, we've got some new council members here, but this is kind of the final part of the puzzle. We've, we've gone in, through this in depth previous times to get to this point, but this land swap is the final part of the puzzle. Any questions? Okay, would someone like to make a, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we'll open that for a public See, I knew no one wanted to talk.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion. An ordinance by the Orem City Council modifying a common boundary between the city of Orem and Provo City located at approximately seven hundred north, fifteen fifty east.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. The ordinance passes. Thank you. All right, now we're up to item 9.4. And this amendment to street connection master plan to eliminate the street connections between 1430 and South and 400 West. Jason, would you like to present that?
If I can give just a little bit of background, this is the property. So what we're talking about is a connection to 1430 South, and then this is the stub street for 100 West. So this property here, the applicant, Mr. Lickety, is here to, to consider a development. That's in a future meeting, we're not here to discuss the development going forward, we're simply here to discuss the street connection. And if I can, I'll fast forward just to show the zone, it's currently R12 with some R8 mixed in. Let me just go to this map here. So the red circles indicate, over time, the Lakeview Street Connection Master Plan, there are streets that are developed that aren't necessarily completed at the time that certain portions of property are developed. So there's left with dead ends, there's left with connections that potentially will connect when that property is ready to develop, but it's not. And so the city identifies those streets that need to be sometime, or sometime in the future, connected to other streets to help with the grid system, to help with interconnectivity of neighborhoods, up to major corridors, things like that. So this map, the Lakeview area, identifies these red circles as being, needing to be connected sometime in the future when the properties are ready to develop. The subject property tonight and the two circles that we're looking at, the applicant has come forward to request is that this, this connection be eliminated and this connection be eliminated. Right now, this, this plan, because it's adopted by ordinance, or by the general plan, requires them to be connected. So when a developer comes in, we're basically going to say, whatever you do in this development, these two streets need to be connected and it needs to be a public street. There's no question. So with, with those being on the map, between 1430 and 400 West, there needs to be a public street unless the council takes those off the map. So tonight, the applicant is here to request that the council consider eliminating those two off of the map. So this is what his application consists, circle those two, and that's what he's proposing. The staff, in talking with the applicant, agrees that we're comfortable with 1430 being eliminated, but I think 400 West needs to be maintained, and we'll get back to the concept plan, for the main purpose that Mr. Peterson's property here would not be able to be developed in this location without having some type of street connection going west. And so you can see the line that Mr. Lickety provided with a potential future, he's not developing Mr. Peterson's property, but gives him an idea of what could be developed in the future. So what we would propose is that this remain active on the street connection plan, that it then would have to go west and have that ability for Mr. Peterson to tie in, to develop if and when he ever wants to develop his property. What we are supportive of is eliminating this connection so that anything that's developed in this portion could connect to the north on 1430, would not have to be a public hearing or public street, and would not be required to connect into 400 West. So this would be a public street with no connection into Mr. Lickety's property except for potential fire access or emergency access which should be gated, that, you know, ambulance or fire could unlock access if they need to, to get south for whatever reason, or north for whatever reason. But as far as the general public, there would be no through traffic through the development. It would simply be required to exit out on 1430, go either to Sand Hill Road or go east up to University Parkway. So the two issues that are before the council tonight, this is his, you know, proposed concept plan, it's simply just a drawing that shows what he may want to do. There's nothing before you tonight that you're voting on, it's simply just a concept that he will, if the council chooses to eliminate one or both of these access points, he then would have the ability to develop this plan without a public street access. Right now, this plan does not work because we're requiring him to have that public street between. So if the council takes action to keep the street, then whatever development he proposes would have to be a public street. If the council chooses to eliminate the 1430, for example, then he can propose something like this, that would be a private development, private streets, and would be able to access out directly to 1430. This is his latest rendition. These are 26-foot wide access points. The fire marshal has looked at it, and ambulance and fire apparatus could use that. You can see the only connection right there would be the gated portion, there would not be a public access, and then this would stub over to the west and eventually would develop into that. You can see that there's potential for some single-family homes. The idea behind connecting that back around and then back to the south would be, this would develop as residential, which would tie into what is currently to the south, which is single-family residential lots. The street, eliminating the street connection would not do anything for any type of development. The council still has the ability to dictate what goes on this property. Right now, it's R12, which is 12,000 square foot, single-family lots. So the only way to do something different, including what Mr. Lickety proposes, is to have the council change the ordinance to something other than what's there. So any, any discussion with high density or anything like that is not being considered without further discussion and approval by the city council. So staff, nor the applicant, has the ability to put any density there other than single-family homes at this, at this point in time. So, so the question before you tonight, again, not to beat a dead horse, but is simply just the street connections, right? That's how we're dealing, we're not dealing with site plan, we're not dealing with any zoning. It's simply, does the council support eliminating one or both of those street accesses so that he does not have to put a public street through his property? So be glad to address any questions.
Jason, I have a question. If you can go to the, the street on 400 West, who owns the property on 400 West that makes the curb? The curb?
This way?
Yeah.
So Mr. Lickety is proposing to buy this portion.
Who owns it now?
I believe one of the Peterson brothers.
Larry, do you own it? No, he doesn't own it.
I think one of his brother.
So that, so they would, so they would stub it right to Larry's property?
Yes.
I have a question. So I remember two years ago, going to a neighborhood meeting for another development that was proposed in this area, and it had a connection between 4th West and 1430 North. It was a street that went right down there through the land, right?
Correct.
It was a PRD, increased density, narrow streets, and it seemed to me at that point the residents just did not want to be connected to 1430. They were afraid there would be parking coming from those townhomes along that street, and there wasn't sufficient parking in that development. So I guess, what, so this would prohibit taking out what you said, the farthest north one, would then prohibit that from another developer from coming with that same type of connection?
So it wouldn't prohibit a developer from proposing a street connection? The city would not require that be connected with a public street.
Okay.
So it wouldn't prohibit somebody from coming in and proposing to the council, we want this street. So it's still an option, but it's not a requirement by the city.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions?
Can I ask another one?
Sure.
So this red line going to Peterson's, Mr. Peterson's property, it has to curve, how far, I think this is what Dave was going to ask, it has to go how far? And then it, it doesn't have to look like that, right? It does not have to be configured in that?
Doesn't necessarily have to do that, but in order to get more property here, he's probably wanting to have it as, you know, meets whatever curve requirements we would have for a public street, and then probably deep enough to at least develop these, you know, into some type of single-family.
And then show me where that would stop.
So it would end, you know, unless he, you know, purchased this property, it would need to end and stub into Mr. Peterson's property.
So if Mr. Peterson wanted to configure that in some other way, he doesn't have to go straight west with that?
He could do another way, but that would be his access point, you know, connecting into that public system would be at that location.
Okay, and that would be provided by?
It would be stubbed in by whoever develops this property.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
But Jason, this, this drawing is not by Larry Peterson, so this, this has nothing to do with his property, meaning he didn't?
No, staff, staff required him, Mr. Lickety, the applicant, to at least show how a potential develop, or layout could work on this property. He also came in with an option B, which basically would come in and do cul-de-sacs off of 1600 South. What this doesn't do is provide access to this property, because the maximum length of a cul-de-sac is 600 feet, and that doesn't get this property. So this property, basically with this option, would be landlocked, which we are not going to encourage. So option A really is the one that doesn't, obviously from this point, Mr. Peterson can come up with a different scheme if he wants to, but this would be the connection point to connecting into a public street.
And, and so there's only one entrance into this proposed unit?
So this development up here would only have one access on 1430, other, except for the emergency access. Yep.
Okay, so as far as, I mean, some of the things I've heard concerns about are that if this layout happens, then it's going to be high density. Can you, potentially high density, can you speak to that?
So, and, and we've talked to Mr. Lickety, his original application is to rezonate highway services, HS, and then limit the uses within that zone by a development agreement. We've talked to Mr. Lickety about potentially coming through with a PD zone, planned development zone, which then the, we could negotiate and put in the PD zone, specific uses that are allowed, and limit it to a certain number of uses that are allowed. Then we can address parking, we can address all those things. So it'd be limited based on the PD zone that's approved by the council on whether or not uses can be allowed. What he's proposing now is a, not a convention center, but a event center, thank you, some retail and wedding reception center. So this would be the commercial component, so we could limit the uses in that PD zone to only those uses. And then we would limit it to, you know, Airbnb or whatever those units are called. So we would not allow high-density housing, we wouldn't allow apartments, you know, those type of things would be excluded out of the PD zone and not be allowed. So it'd be really up to the council, whatever is it, you know, adopted as far as the text of the PD, and then rezoning it would be based on what's in the code itself. And that's the advantage of a PD zone, is we can limit the uses, but then we can also require certain things within that PD zone. Our intent is not to encourage high-density housing here, it's simply to, to, you know, if this is the direction that the council wants to go, is to make a PD zone that would work, but limit him to the uses that he wants to use and not leave it wide open that in the future, they, somebody could change their mind and come in and do apartments. That's not the intent, and we would not encourage that, nor would we support that.
So our vote tonight does not influence whether this gets approved or not? We're not voting on this at all?
It's simply allowing him to move forward with something like this, not having to have a street connection that's a public street. That's really the intent now, is, is the council wanting to eliminate the public street component? And if they do, let's say you take off 1430, then he can do something like this and not be required to connect with a public street. That's really the only thing before you tonight. We wanted to split them out so it doesn't get bogged down and all the different things going on. If this is decided tonight, then we can focus on the site plan, we can focus on the ordinance, and move that forward rather than everybody, you know, up in arms about connection and streets and all that stuff. So we can decide one item now, and then bring the other one forward another time.
And if this project doesn't happen, what are we left with?
So right now, you can't do this project because the zoning is single-family. So it's going to take a zone change, create a PD or whatever the council decides, and so it would have to go through that whole process. Planning Commission makes a recommendation, city council ultimately approves the text and the zone. Once it's approved, then he's allowed to do whatever is within that zone. If he chooses not to, or he sells it and somebody else wants to come do something different, then they would have to go through the whole process again. Text amendment, come back with a council, show a concept plan, because we're going to tie whatever concept, whatever elevations, whatever he wants to do, it's all going to be required by ordinance in the PD zone. So if he shows us an elevation, we're going to expect him to build that elevation. If he wants to change it, he's going to have to come back and get that approved through the council.
So we're basically just approving, I mean, we're, we're taking, closing one access point, and we're keeping one open.
That would be our recommendation.
That's what you're recommending right now. And so let's say we do that. So if we do that, and then say this doesn't happen because there's several steps after this that have, have to happen, but you, you want to go back to it being single-family homes, is that still possible through this, or do you just change?
It is possible. So a developer could come in, if somebody, you know, whoever comes in and says, we just want to do an R8 subdivision, we want to connect for, you know, whatever, it would, it could be possible. It's not required, but a developer could propose it, the planning commission could approve it and go forward. So it doesn't eliminate, the street will never be connected, but it doesn't, it does eliminate the obligation for a developer to be forced to put in the public street.
So this is just, all we would be doing if we did what you're talking about, we'd be defining that Mr. Lickety could go, keep going with his project potentially because, because now he understands what the access points are, what the roads look like, and what he's working with.
Correct.
Or also ensuring the person, where we are keeping the road connected, that they can develop that property back in there into single-family homes, right?
Yes.
So that's, that's kind of what's before us right now. There's no, I mean, there's a whole process that has to continue for this, to ultimately go to this place, but this is kind of the first step. Am I understanding that right?
Correct. There'll be at least two public hearings, one with the planning commission, one with the city council, for any proposed rezone, any proposed PD text, any of that kind of stuff coming forward, will have to come through this same process.
And as far as the concern that this is just a pathway to high-density housing?
Not, not factual.
I mean, because it would have, I mean, it would be a heavy lift, it seems like.
Now, I know you guys are all proponents of high-density, so I'm not saying you won't, but the answer would be no, yeah.
Okay. Dave?
I just think, Jason, the concern I had was the emails that we received from the citizens, a lot of them said that we, we want, we don't want the road to go through, we want this project to go through because if not, we're going to get high-density. And I, it concerns me that, that we're scaring people into liking this project or not. And I just think, I mean, tonight, we're just doing two, it has nothing to do with it, so I think maybe they put the cart before the horse, but this is just, access is on 1430 and 400 West.
It simply just gives the developer the ability to understand now that he, he can come up with a concept that doesn't have to force him to put a public street in. That's basically, tonight just gives him some direction of whether the council, doesn't mean you're giving him direction on your liking the PD, or you're liking what he's proposing, because that's another meeting. Tonight is simply just saying, yeah, we're okay with that being closed, but it doesn't eliminate the option, to your point, Mayor, that somebody could still come in and propose a street, whether it's a single-family development or whatever.
Right, so we're not really losing any options, we're just defining this at this point in time, and then we continue down the path and see where we wind up?
Correct.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, we'll open this to the public for a public hearing.
Hello, my name's Gloria Peterson. My husband Larry and I own the property just west of this. In clarification of Councilwoman Millet, a couple years ago, when they proposed that, the reason this, the neighborhood did not want that to go through was because Bach Homes was trying to make it a higher density. Our whole concern is the density that is trying to go into there. And I understand that this isn't the time or place for that, but just for your information, the neighborhood would like it to be kept what it is, the residential zoning. As far as 4th West going through, the, the plat that Mr. Lickety has engineered down through our property, that road goes directly behind my house and also out by the side of my house, which is not going to happen. And so the only access out of that upper property is actually out onto 4th, 4th West, which would continue out onto 1600 South. My concern is, is I, we are not interested in developing our property right now, but sooner or later, I won't be here and it will be developed. So my concern is 4th West, I think, is imperative to go through because all that access will come down 1600 South, and it will go down on Sand Hill Road. Any of you who are aware of Sand Hill Road knows that it is the frontage road to Grand View. Orem has, or Provo has no freeway exit other than Center Street. And so all of that feeds down through Sand Hill Road, even though they don't live there. There isn't a tremendous amount of traffic on Sand Hill Road, and it really can't handle a whole lot more traffic. a whole lot more traffic. So I would just ask for your consideration in, for future development, that Fourth West needs to go through, just to alleviate the traffic that will come through that neighborhood. And that is what the neighbors are concerned about. And so that is just my recommendation that you allow Fourth West to go through for that reason. Thank you.
Could you, just to clarify for everyone, can you point out the access point she's talking about?
I believe it's, her house is right here if I'm.
Yes.
And so this road just represents the potential redevelopment, so that's, yeah.
So would that, would that work with what's, we're talking about tonight?
No.
Yeah, only if they were to redevelop. So let's say, you know, they move on and somebody develops a property, the house may be torn down, redeveloped. This is only, this is only a potential. This is only if and when they're ready to develop. The city or anybody is not forcing the street. It's just a concept that this is a way to develop the property, it's not the only way to develop.
Are you saying then, so 400 West is where the curve is?
So this is what, yeah, she, I think her comment is that this needs to be connected.
That's what you're saying, right, is we need to have that?
Yes, and I say that just because all that, if it's currently the way it is there, it will all go down onto Sand Hill Road. And I think there needs to be another access other than Sand Hill Road.
Yeah, right now, Mayor, the, or the council, this, this is the road that comes down Hidden Hollow, you know, from Main Street, it comes down here. And this is the, this is the direct route to Sand Hill Road. So this is the main, the road through that.
So Gloria, you're talking about, you, you want 1430 South open and that connected to 400 West, both of them?
Right, right. Because that, that ultimately goes on out to University Parkway and it makes access from the neighborhood as well as the, any future developments to go out that way instead of come down onto Sand Hill.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Steven Strong. I live in the neighborhood just adjacent off of 1600 South from Peterson's property, excuse me. When Bach Homes came through and proposed there.
Jason, if you could, when they come up, if you could just tell us, put the dot where they're talking about.
So I live at 1664 South 500 West, down just a little bit, right down the edge, right down, right there. This, it's not on that map, it's right behind there. So when Bach Homes came through, we weren't opposed to the layout they had of the roads. It was opposed to the high density housing that they wanted to put in there. We loved the flow that the 10 acres of Peterson property pushed out onto 1430. We're for 400 going to 1430 for that proposed. Closing off 1430 does have future ramifications in changing the development of this property. We want to see it residential and stayed residential. By having the road and stuff just stay status quo, that encourages developers to keep that as residential zoning. The other piece of property that needs to be taken consideration in the future development is Hershey's property right next to the State Center. There's eight acres right there that will be developed in the future, hopefully into residential homes. And that flow of that traffic, instead of coming right past my house off to 1600, would need to flow and have a better flow out to 1430. The third piece of property I'm concerned about is the city owns the property right to the east of the proposed development. That is on the master plan slated to be a city park. By closing off that road and allowing this development, we've now closed off our whole neighborhood to a future potential park that this, that the city could put in. And that limits the, that limits the use that the city has for that property. It devalues that property. So I, I want to maintain this, we all do, a residential neighborhood and keeping this road ensures that because once, once we close off 1430, if you propose that, then the next thing is now we have to fight a Airbnb 84 unit development that's in our backyard. So that's the next fight. It, it shouldn't be this hard. Developers, neighbors were getting text messages last night from Jay Lickety saying, hey, email the city council, tell them that two residential developers have, have tried to build stuff there, but they, but they can't and they won't. That's not true. They weren't residential developers, they were high density developers. We are not opposed to a residential developer coming in and making beautiful homes, maintaining the feel of our neighborhood. We, that's what we want. I've lived on that same street for 44 years. My great grandpa was the first person to live in Orem on that street. And all my aunts and uncles, we all live in that same area. We want to maintain a nice neighborhood. I plan on living there the rest of my life. And, you know, seeing an Airbnb development going on my backyard, I don't like. But maintaining the future development and thinking about the pieces of property that are around there, that has great ramifications if we close that road. Thank you.
My name is Larry Peterson and my wife just talked a few minutes ago. And a few years ago, when Ed, when Ed Gifford was on the planning, he came down to my place down there and we were talking about Sand Hill Road, about widening Sand Hill Road and what we were going to do, what they wanted, the city wanted to do. Down here on the corner, I have an old house. And Ed talked to me about, was taking that house out, widening the road. And then he wanted to right away for the power line to go up to the power company pole, about 50 feet up and then a power line across the front of the property. The two power lines got put in, but the house never got tore down. Right there on the corner, there is at least three to five accidents every year on Sand Hill Road. That corner alone, there's that many accidents. Now, that in red is where Jay put a dividing line of my property with a little blue line up above where it ends, but all that above, those are all his lots. And they're all designed to come out Fourth West, out into the subdivision that we live in. Now, the little red line is designed to take and go all the way up and come out and come this way. And in our last meeting, the council, I told Jay and I to get together and come up with something. Jay come by, presented that, and I told him that is no good. That's not taking and going out to the north. You're starting everything in the future, everything, right down into the subdivision right there. And on Sand Hill Road. You already got plenty of accidents on Sand Hill Road. Now you're going to put in a whole two subdivisions worth of people. I'm against it. I would definitely want the road to go to the north and there's plenty of people that will build on that property and will not put high density. And my property doesn't need to be high density either. Some people are saying, well, Governor Cox wants Jay's peace and my peace for high density. I haven't had Brother Cox come and talk to me yet. It's just residential. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Jeff Mon, I also live in that neighborhood just right south of that. You know, I would love to block the road, keep, less cars in my neighborhood. Yeah, that's, sounds like the ideal thing. So if you guys could do that, that'd be great. And then just put houses in there, that'd be great too. But I know I'm wishing for too much. So I say to myself, well, I, what's, what's the worst evil here? Is it having the road through or having high density or having this thing, this 82 unit Airbnb right up against my house? And it's that. So I'd much rather have the road go through and allow us to keep it as R8, R12, just like it is today. I don't understand why as a council, you would carve out, you're, you're putting the horse, you know, the cart before the horse. Let's, let's have Brother Lickety come in and tell us exactly what he's going to do and propose at that time to close off the roads. So we know what's going to happen instead of piecemealing this. That's what I'd prefer. But again, everybody in my neighborhood, everybody that I've talked to, all they want is just the zones that are there currently. That's what would be good for my neighborhood, for my ward, for my kids. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Marion Baxter. We raised our family in this area at 466 West 1600 South, or 1640 South for 33 years. We then moved a whole block and a half east onto 1600 South at 325 West. And just literally, we know this area. And I will tell you that the road connection is on the master transportation plan for a reason. And I really wanted to give gratitude to several of the council members. Dave Spencer and Lynne Millet came to a neighborhood meeting. We actually have had some planning commission members come and we would invite any of the council members that have never come and driven that area, will give you personal tours because the, this piece and parcel is beautiful view lots of the Orem Temple and the lake. And they are gorgeous. And the other thing that happens with the master points of 1430 South to the north of this parcel, one of the things my concern has been, and you can check the records in the planning commission presentation, the applicant, who is my very west next door neighbor, made this statement, who's going to pay me for the road of 400 West coming through? That is a major connection point and it does not go all the way like Sand Hill and Main Street. It literally goes from 1430 and the farthest south it can go is Nielsen's Grove. So you're not going to get, it's not the exhaust pipe for Grand View Hill. It serves the residential stabilizing area there. So if you're going to shift the valuation of the land by taking out major connection roads, I totally disagree. I have never gotten Mr. Lickety to show me. I have asked for this and I've said, why can't you do your development with both connections of 400 West staying in place? And he never will consider that. And I'm going, you don't want to carve your land off, but literally you want to shift all of the access and that responsibility to Larry and Gloria Peterson's land. That's a shifting that I don't think is reasonable. So we would like to keep that in place and I'm on 1600 South to the east. If there is ever any connecting points above, we've talked with Sam Kelly and we will help support that also. You've got sewer lines, you've got water and infrastructure lines that are dead ended right now. So when any future connections come through, we will support it. So thank you for your consideration and come visit us. We'll show you how beautiful that area is and we want to stabilize the residential. We've taken a lot of density housing to, to support UVU, but we will support stabilizing residential development and not shifting the zone, keep the road connections. Thank you.
Can I borrow your red pointer? I don't know if you've got a red pointer or not, maybe I could just go ahead and explain. That's okay.
Hi, my name is Doug Bertell and I live at 450 West 1600 South. I've lived there for 47 years and so I'm very familiar with this area, love this area. I'm, my backyard goes into the Peterson property. My big concern in this whole thing is I do not want a zone change. And I've talked to very, most of my neighbors who do not want a zone change at all, R8 and R12 are residential. We don't want this, you know, to become anything else. But that road needs to go through and I'll let, you know, my fears and my concerns if the road does not go through. First of all, down at 400 there on 1600, between there, that is designated as a through street right now. Mr. Lickety does not own that property yet. From about where that red line is, all the way up to 1430, he does not own. He wants to buy it, but he doesn't own it. There's also a lower section below 1600 that he does not own, but he wants to purchase it. So all that area right there where this road would not go through is not on his property. He does not own it. I want to make that clear. Okay, with that road right there, if you look at that development, you close off that access between 1430 and 400, you've got 84 units in there, you've got all these businesses and all that traffic would then have to dump on to 1430. If you've been on 1430 in the middle of that road, that starts up where he would have his access point that goes up by Krispy Kreme, that's a steep road. Wintertime traffic, nothing but a disaster. You have that much traffic trying to come out one access point onto 1430 and then go down to Sand Hill Road. You come by there at night and right where he wants to access off onto 1430, from there down by the Lexington, all the way to Sand Hill Road, all the way to 1600 South, there are over 120 cars that park there now because of Lexington. He wants to close 400 off at the bottom and have a key to designate if he can open up or he can close. He could open it up at any time and all that traffic would then come down 1600. But let me ask you this question. You have two access points for that much traffic going in and out, you have to have it. We know what happened down in Palisades, California and in Maui. This is a forested area. He wants to put fire pits in there, but he doesn't want any access for the fire trucks or anything to come in. If there's accidents, congestion, anything on 1430, and that's where the emergency vehicles come, where are they going to have to come? They're going to have to come all the way down Sand Hill, come around 1600 and try to get through on 400. He wants to control that, he wants to have a key. So do all the fire departments, all of, all of the trucks, all of the police, all of their cars have access to come into that location or not? I don't think so. If we close 400 off and not make access up to 1430 and you develop something like that, there's going to be nothing but death and destruction. And I don't think the Orem City or the council wants to see anybody killed on 1430 because of traffic issues, problems, or because the emergency vehicles can't get into that area. They try to get down to 1430, they don't have a key to get in. Time is of an essence. If you have a shooting, a murder, a fire, anything else, a heart attack, anything else that could take place in that complex and you can't get emergency vehicles in, it's on you because somebody's going to die and it'll happen if they don't have access. Leave it residential, put that through street in. Don't cause more issues or problems. There's nothing wrong with residential in that area. Leave it that way. But don't give one individual a key to open up the gates if the emergency vehicles can't come in because if they can't come in one area, they're going to go after the other area. Time is of an essence. People's lives depend on it and people's lives depend on 1430. You've got 300 apartments that use that roadway all the time. And if you try to get that much more traffic onto 1430 in the middle of a hill, look at it in the wintertime, nobody can get up and down that hill in the wintertime with three or four inches of snow. But you're trying to bring out 84 units and you're trying to bring all that traffic from those businesses onto one access. Let the road go through, please. Don't even consider of closing that road. It has to be an access point. Gives Larry access off his property, it gives roadway through, and then you got that park developed and everything won't have to come off 1450. Because if they develop that park up there like they want to, that's one road to get in and out of the park. So please consider that. That road needs to go through. It needs to be left residential. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. My name is Dawn Mon, I'll keep it short. I live about two blocks south of where they want to close off 400 West. I am, I agree with everything that's already been said, I am in favor of it. I mean, tonight, all the, and you guys have said about Family City USA, the beautiful parks we have, Family City USA, everything's been advertising Family City USA and changing the zoning, that's not promoting Family City USA. We love our neighborhood, we want to see the growth, we want to see other families come in, we don't want to be scared by. We don't want to be scared by threats of, we've had people at other meetings threatening us that we have to accept this, or we would get high density. We just want to keep the zone the way it is. Thank you.
Hi, my name's John Masalia. I live at 1552 South 300 West, just to the east of, of the red line on there. I am, I'm unlike everyone else that's spoken today. I'm, I am in favor of getting rid of the Ford, or the 400 West road requirement. I feel that Mr. Lickety is trying to preserve all those trees that are in that area. And putting in a road would require the plowing down a ton of the, the trees in that area. People have been saying the words Airbnb a lot. That his plan isn't an Airbnb, so I don't know why they keep saying that. It's, it's managed, actively managed and stuff like that. I also feel that it's good that, to keep the, all the high density housing that's above separated from the low density that's down below. If we put 400 West in, then all that traffic will start getting down into the low density neighborhood, and people will start parking further south and crowding it up. I also believe Mr. Lickety's property plans provide a unique service that's unavailable elsewhere in the area. It also would provide jobs to local youth and, and it would help keep the traffic low. So, that's why I'm in favor. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to comment? Okay, so we'll, we'll close, oh, you got one more? Okay.
Hi, my name is Linda Vertell, and I live at 450 West, 1600 South, right by that property. I would like to see 4th West go through. I don't care if they tear the trees down, it's not a forest. They're Russian olives and Chinese elms. And those Chinese elms have brought nothing but these elm seed bugs. If you see them, they're tiny little bugs. We've had them for the last several years, gobs of them because of those trees. And I would be happy if they were torn down. Like to see it stay residential. We want some more homes in the area, we need the homes in the area. So I'd like to see 4th West go through. Drive up and down 1430 all the time, cars are up there parked out. People trying to drive out, you can't see because the cars are parked on the street. And people pull, pull right out in front of you. And along Sand Hill, driving that in the morning, the cars are parked out even on the curve. And you have to go all the way around them to get by them. So, we, like someone else mentioned, we are surrounded by high density. We don't need any more, we'd like to keep it residential and keep it Family City USA. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Before we vote, Jason, is there anything? Oh, Steve?
Mary, I just want to point out, I think Mr. Lickety is here, who's actually the applicant on this. And I don't think he had a chance to speak at the outset, and maybe you want to afford him an opportunity now if he'd like to come up and address the council on his application.
Kyle Spencer with Northern Engineering. Jay's asked to make, that I act his voice here and, and answer any questions and concerns that you might have. And I know there was a concern by a citizen here mentioning that we'd like to bundle all this up and propose the rezone, the site plan, and this traffic, uh, transportation element revision all in one bundle, so we know what we're getting. And we understand that, and we're trying, we're trying to be as transparent as possible to see what Jay would like to propose in the future. But currently, we cannot because of the requirement of the connectivity of the public roadway. I, I love coming to public comment meetings because I can hear, as an engineer, the concerns and direct comments from the, the residents, the current people that's lived here longer than I, than I have. And can see the, the, if we can then impact or implement in our design their concerns and their direct concerns. And with this, what we have before us tonight, we're showing what Jay would like to have, would like to propose coming on in the future, which would require dissecting this up into a rezone to the PD overlay zone. And then also, then the, the initial site plan that would then go through staff and planning commission and council through, you know, a detailed public comments and, and, but we feel that this is the first step. If, if the council and is not in favor of, of at least eliminating the red dot on 1430, then clearly the side, the site plan and plan that Jay is proposing would not, can't, can't come to fruition. So, you know, obviously that is the very first step. I know that there's a concern that the access points to, from this, this site plan would have exclusive access to 400 West, as shown here on that red line. That is clearly not the case. The whole point to having a gate access off of 14, or off to 400 from this plan would be for specifically emergency access purposes. And, and with that, yes, the fire trucks and police officers would have access through what we call a Knox box, and pretty much any other high density structure or gated, gated access throughout Orem City. So I just wanted to make sure that that, that was addressed. Also, with this plan, this, um, I hope I'm not going of stretching out here, but the first item on the agenda today was a concern of a public road or a private road connecting high density development from an adjacent develop, or even adjacent municipality on to single-family detached homes. In this, in that case, you know, the concern there is, we don't want that connectivity. We don't want that connection. We don't want to discharge high density development on to single-family detached homes in the neighborhood. It ruins that neighborhood. I look at it from, and I might, it's from this plan, all of the site plan and access from this proposed plan, knowing that that's really not what's before you today. But all that access from this future development would, in fact, connect on to 1430 and not connect to 400 West. And thus, the residential neighborhood would remain single-family residential without having that added impact of traffic coming off of 1430 penetrating into this existing single-family detached residential development. Now, I know that's specifically coming, pulling traffic from the north to the south. I know what that doesn't address is the potential connectivity from the existing single-family residential homes traveling north. Yes, without that connection, the traffic then would, would, from the existing homes, it would be basically like what it is today. Today, there's not a road that connects 400 to 1430. In the future, what we're proposing is to eliminate that north circle that then would basically preserve what that access that we have today, allowing that connection for that residential development to connect to Sand Hill Road the way it currently is, without adding multiple developments, so.
So, I've got a question.
Yeah.
So, with this project, it's not feasible to put the road in from 1430 and connect 400 West?
On this specific plan, no.
Why?
Mainly primarily because of the exclusivity that says, that it's wanting to establish with the, with the cabin lots. I know Jay, Jay can address that.
Yeah, so briefly, the, the whole purpose of this was to keep the neighborhoods that exist, and the future ones will be built around there, to have low traffic and to be family friendly and be peaceful. So, as soon as you let the road go through, then you, you open up to having more traffic and...
So you couldn't curve down around your property and then hook into the 400 West? Like, just sort of nears your property, or no?
It could possibly, but then you have to shift everything over. I was just thinking, our neighborhood, for years, they've had this fight about the streets coming through to the east. And nobody wants that. And, and because the trees act like a natural barrier right now, just like the Golden Crown, the Target areas do up on Center Street and University Parkway. And so, we were just thinking for the neighbors to the south there, that they wouldn't want all that overflow traffic coming through either. So, the, the purpose of this was to, to keep the buffer, keep the barrier that's there. So we, we don't have the increased traffic. Because, you know, UVU, largest university in the state, University Parkway is the largest exit off of I-15 in the county. There's, it's a lot that goes on right there. And if we don't keep the buffer that's there, which the Forest Act is a buffer right now, if we don't keep that buffer, then we, we just open the door for a, a lot of traffic and parking. Because like, the Home Association president from Lexington called and said that they just have a massive problem with all the parking. And you can see the, on the street, there's a lot of cars. They let a lot more residents come in, and then, or more occupants in that, that allows. So, so once again, this was just designed to maintain the buffer and provide place for peaceful neighborhoods and services for the city.
Any other questions? Anything else you guys would like to add?
I just want to add just one quick thing. When, when Jay came into our office and was presenting this plan, I didn't know that Jay lived just a stone's throw away. And as, as an engineer, that doesn't happen very often. Oftentimes, my clients live multiple municipalities away. And I feel that, you know, I, I gave Jay definitely a listening ear, wanted to see his vision and view of what he wants to preserve, not only with this buffer, but also with his neighborhood and community. I give a lot of credit to that, and I compliment Jay on that. I know he's, he's now wearing that developer hat within all of his, you know, his, his neighbors. And, and oftentimes, that carries with that a negative annotation. And, but I, I look at it as, as there's an opportunity here that Jay's trying to accomplish is, is to preserve a buffer that can preserve that, that neighborhood feel and that community. And I would be the first one to tell Jay that if this proposal that he's doing would, would hinder that, I would, I, I, I believe that the site plan that Jay's proposing, the vision that he is, is, he has here for this, in essence, especially with the transportation element, would in essence preserve that, that neighborhood feel on the existing single-family residential neighborhood to the south and also to the east of here. So, I just wanted to add that to...
What's the density of this?
Density, a good question. Because oftentimes, when I see density, it, it equates to a tax ID number, a parcel number, right? Something that you can sell an individual unit to. I look at this, the way that it's been explained to me is it's kind of a horizontal hotel. It's gonna be owned by a single entity, managed by a single entity. If there is the negative annotations of Airbnbs, if we get a, a rowdy room or a rowdy unit, they're, they're asked to, to leave, just like you would have a hotel room. If, if you have a rowdy neighbor next door, you can call their office and say, "Can they cool it down?" Or, and they typically defuse the situation. Unlike an Airbnb, who do you call if you're, if you're in an Airbnb situation? Because in that case, there's typically not a property management onsite. And, but with that, that's this, the way I have envisioned this for what Jay's tried to explain it to me. Granted, I know that's not part of the item on the agenda, this will come up in future. But it's more of a quaint, quiet cabin sites that'll have two units per cabin, or two rooms, basically, where they can, the, the future tenants can come in and stay for a short stay, one, two, three nights, similar to a hotel, and still have that ambiance of kind of a forest or a, you know, you're, you're within the trees, something similar like what you would experience like in a Sundance, without going up, clear up to Sundance. And with this, trying to preserve the, the trees. And, and also, we, we've heard today that, you know, they, they are the, the elm trees. And elm trees have a, have a, a negative connotation to them. And, but with that, that, that they still provide that forest type buffer and shade and that, that mature tree atmosphere that then, while they're there, we can also introduce new trees to, to still preserve that, that ambiance that, that this site plan is, is proposing. So, anyways, that's, I, I hope that that answers your question. It was simply, what's the density here? But, but I feel that this is more of a, a spread out hotel versus a vertical hotel.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Oh, you're not doing it? I don't know, I mean...
I mean, technically, you can make a motion anytime, but did you have some other questions? Because we should let everyone just finish and...
I can, I'll wait.
Okay.
Yeah, I just was sitting here and, I don't know. I feel very uncomfortable voting on this. I feel like the, the comments were related to voting on a project that I haven't seen. I, that seems very, like I'm not doing my due diligence here. We want to be able to allow options to be seen. I don't know that I agree with this project. That's not what was on my agenda tonight, though, whether I agree with this project or not. And I don't, I'm not saying either way. I know, I just feel like that it's centered around whether we're, like, I feel like this is the site plan that we're voting on tonight. And I don't think that's what was presented to us.
So, we, I'm fine with what the...
So, I guess I'm just saying, am I right, Steve? I mean, where are we? This is not for the project that we voted on.
That's correct, yeah, this, you know, if you were to approve this application to eliminate the connection on 1430 South, it doesn't commit you to any kind of a project. I mean, the property, most of the property that we're talking about is still zoned R12. And it stays R12 until the council decides to change that or decides not to change that. You know, maybe that, I mean, whoever wants to develop it will have to develop it as R12 unless the council decides to rezone it, whether that's next month or next year, 10 years from now. So, yeah, it doesn't commit you to any project if you were to change these required connections.
So, okay, I'll just tell you what I think. And, and I know Jay, I think Jay's a good guy. I mean, we're not like best friends or anything, but he sells cool broadheads, and I bought him before. But yeah, my, my understanding was that we were voting just to, on the, the street issue, which is what we're doing. But then I fast forward, and I think, okay, so if we're voting on the street issue, we're kind of like just saying, you know, "Let's keep going." And I'm, I'm not sure that I'm sold on the concept. I mean, I, you know, it's a nice concept and all that, but from a standpoint of how it affects the neighbors and what the neighbors want. And so, if the neighbors want R8 and R12, and to make that all happen, we need to keep the connections. And we can go back and do it later, I understand. But, I don't know, I kind of hate to walk Jay down a path where, when in the end, I would probably vote against this project just because I would, I vote to just maintain the single-family status of neighborhoods. the single-family status of neighborhoods. So I don't want to, so that's where my concern is as far as, yeah, and I would probably just punt and say, let's just keep the access points the way they are and see where this goes. But anyway, that's just my opinion.
And I agree with you, Mayor, but my whole thing is, I think, what is the compelling reason to amend the State Street Connection Master Plan and to eliminate the connection? Is there a compelling reason? And I don't think there is. So I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the city council...
All right. Does anyone else have something they want to say before, because we're swept on this motion? Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add?
Access, Jay? So is this your option? Is this what you would bring forward to us? That's your plan?
Is what the...
This development?
The concept?
Yeah. Are you sold on this? Is this kind of where you are?
Well, we're flexible. I mean, I've compromised a lot. I just wanted to say that eliminating the one circle on the top left, 1430, does give the option to put in something that would not have a lot of traffic flow through and keep the neighbors on the south and on the east from having problems with traffic, but...
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, I've compromised a lot since we came up with this. And it was my original goal just to preserve the neighborhood peacefulness. And this was an idea of a way that produced money, revenue for the city, and it would pay for itself and be permanent. So, but I'm not 100% set on it.
So I just feel, just for those of you that are here, we've received, this is such a troublesome thing for me, I don't know about the rest of you, but we've received emails to the contrary of the comments that were heard tonight. A large majority of emails that supported this project. I think, well, it's probably half and half. I don't know, I was keeping track. So it's kind of hard to come here tonight and then hear all anti, where just before I came to this meeting, I read emails that were in favor of keeping the, I mean, that actually said, we don't want that to connect because we don't want the students coming down through our neighborhood. So I'm just kind of, so you know where we're coming from, there's oftentimes more than what happens in this meeting that we have before us. So I appreciate your patience and your coming tonight to tell us these things because there's been some new information brought to light too. So thank you for your involvement, but I also feel like I need to disclose that so y'all know kind of what we see behind the scenes too, right?
Yeah. Amen to what you're, excuse me, Mayor.
Just let me say this real quick, but my concern with the emails, because I received the emails also, and on the surface, I would just say, yeah, there's all this evidence, you know, that to shut these access points. But the theme on a lot of the emails was because we don't want high density, we want to stop high density. It wasn't necessarily, we love the project, it was we don't want high density. And that's my concern because I think we have an option to not have high density.
I think they were also, though, they didn't want the traffic as well. I think there was more to it than just density, although I do think that was part of it.
Yeah. Jeff?
And I was just going to add to what Laney said. I thought that I knew what I wanted to do tonight, but it feels like everything that we've heard tonight is 180 degrees from the emails that I've read throughout the week. So I'm a little unprepared, I feel.
Yeah, and I agree with Jeff on that one. I think coming in, I felt like I knew what I wanted to do based on the feedback I've gotten, and I've gotten a lot of feedback like all of us have. And it's, land use issues are hard, you know. I hear one person wants this and then somebody else wants exactly the opposite and we get to be the arbiters and decide that it's a hard job. So we really appreciate your engagement. We appreciate you coming and sharing your opinions. I feel at this point, this is a tricky one. I don't, maybe we need to rethink it. I don't want to say a tacit no, but I don't want to say a yes either. I feel like maybe we need some time.
We're back to Mr. Motion?
No, I mean, I think my thing is on the emails. If you really drill down, it was an email from Jay Lickdys to the neighbors telling them what to say. And that, it sort of turned me off. But that, I mean, the gist of the emails were the same, but I'd like to make a motion that the city council deny the amendment of the State Street Connection Master Plan to eliminate the State Street connections between 1430 South and 400 West. Okay, tried.
Okay. We don't have a second, but I don't think anyone's that enthusiastic about the whole thing.
Can we punt it?
Yeah, we can continue it if we want.
Jay, how do you feel about our continuing this till we get a little more information?
I was just gonna...
Do you want a decision tonight? Because I don't know that you're going to get what you want, but do you want to?
I was just going to make a comment too. On the Planning Commission, you know, the Planning Commission's staff presented this to the Planning Commission to send a recommendation to the council. And it was interesting to see how it was, there were several motions that were proposed and not seconded. And it went through, but at the Planning Commission, there were four red circles rather than just two. And it was interesting that, just how it evolved into that meeting, having similar public hearing with a lot of negative comments here that were shared in the public hearing at the Planning Commission as well. And sadly, at that meeting, they passed this meeting, this item onto the city council with no recommendation because it was split 2-2. So I understand, these are hard things. And with that, I compliment you as council members to be in your seats because they are hard things. And if we feel that this needs to stew and to really marinate in the comments from the public hearings today, as well as the emails that came through that are really part of the public hearing as well, I think that you welcome that because oftentimes then you can, you can look at this and take out the motion and really go out as the invitation was presented here, go out and drive it. Go out and say, if this road were to connect, how much traffic are we going to see migrating from the north into the south, if any? I might be up in the night. Maybe we might not see any migration of the higher-density traffic and parking to migrate in here, but there may, there may be. So I would be, on behalf of Jay, be in recommendation to maybe table it and continue it and let you go out there and experience this little neighborhood and see what they have here that they're trying to preserve.
Well, with that, I'm ready to make a motion. I move that we postpone this or continue this until, do I have to give a date?
So you can continue it to a date certain or to without date? And then if there's no dates specified to when you continue to, then we'll just have to renotice it when you're ready to hear it, so.
I would, I would make a motion that we continue it to our next meeting. I don't think we want to push it out too far, which is, do you have a date? I don't have the date. February 13?
13th of February.
13th of February. That's my motion. I second. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, so we'll keep going. Thank you for coming. We're not adjourned yet, but thank you to you guys for coming. All right. Item number 11, City Manager Information Items. Bren?
Thank you. Just quickly wanted to let you know, of course, the legislative session is in full swing and last time we had some interaction with some of our local legislators and Utah League of Cities and Towns. So just wanted to make you aware that we have been following up on the different subjects that came up in that last discussion and been reaching out to both the legislators that came, but also other legislators with, that represent Orem and have their districts here. So namely, following up on items related to homeownership to...
Hang on just one sec. Could you guys please be quiet? Excuse me. Let us continue the meeting. Thank you.
So, yeah, so trying to speak with legislators that are state legislators that represent Orem, have districts here about homeownership initiatives, about our concerns with how station area plans are approved. And then finally, reaching out to them about appropriations requests for Center Street between I-15 and Geneva Road. So just want to make sure you're knowing that we're in the thick of it and moving forward with that. So that was the only update I wanted to provide, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Bren. I appreciate what you're doing. I've seen those emails going back and forth between you and the representatives and I think that's exactly what we need because there's a lot of unknowns about station or air master plans that needs to be defined and I appreciate you working on that. All right. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Like to make a motion that we adjourn.
I second. Aye.
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 We adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Do you please, in the future, when you call an applicant back up and you allow their engineer and them to speak again, everyone tonight left saying, why did you not get to respond to the applicant's input? That needs to change, please, because he brought up issues and assets, aspects that we did not get to address, meaning this changing of the zone and the cutoff, the question of why can't 400 West go around that...